And I pulled up the new publisher connection.
A lot.
We have so.
We're recording in the end. Okay, perfect. Good evening. It is April 4th, 2023, and welcome to the city council meeting. My name is Barb Noseworthy. I'm your mayor, and we will start this meeting with a roll call, please.
Councillor Baxter.
Present.
Councillor Bosmans. Councillor Bule.
Here.
Mayor Prostam Youssef.
Here.
And Mayor Noseworthy.
Present. Thank you.
Councillor Bosmans mentioned in the study session he might be a little bit late.
Will acknowledge his presence when he makes it to the meeting. Do we have any translation, please?
Yes, Mayor, we have Diego Pons here.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Diego Pons, here today with my colleague Maite. On behalf of the Community Language Cooperative, as always, thanks for having us at your meeting. The organizers of the meeting continue making a commitment towards language justice. So what this means is that we're here to help to create a space for people to participate and engage in the language of their heart. Just simply the language so you're most comfortable in, and we're going to continue using simultaneous interpretation here on the Zoom space to upgrade the space in English and in Spanish. Once I finish saying this in English, I'll repeat it in Spanish. At that moment, we start the interpretation, and once interpretation is on, you're going to be able to see that globe icon. This is interpretation there on the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. As always, I'll ask you to please select that globe icon. When you see it appear on your screen, and please select your preferred language. If you happen to be joining today's meeting on yourself on your tablet, you'll instead be looking for the more button or the three dots button so that you can select your preferred language that way. If you're not fully bilingual, we'll encourage you to select your preferred language. So you may realize the interpretation if anyone were to speak in the opposite language, and you would like to know what they are saying. If you are bilingual, then please just feel free to listen to everyone in the original language. You don't need to select any language channel if you don't want to do so, and you don't ever have to hear our voices as the interpreters. As always, when you select your language, you can check your original audio. So you don't have to be hearing both languages at the same time. And as always, just please pay attention to the speed in which you're speaking. Just please make sure that you're speaking at a conversational pace, and please make sure that you're not pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much for that. Buenas tardes a todos y a todas. Mi nombre es Diego Pons. Estoy aquí hoy con mi colega Maite de parte de la Cooperativa Comunitaria de la Justicia del Lenguaje, CLC. Como siempre, gracias por invitarnos hoy a su reunión. Los oingresadores de esta reunión se han comprometido hoy a servir la justicia al lenguaje. Lo que eso significa es que queremos continuar creando un espacio para que todas las personas puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma a su corazón. Simplemente el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Vamos a continuar hoy utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para poder crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Y ahora cuando yo termine de decir esto, se va a activar la interpretación. Y a cuando se activa la interpretación, usted va a poder ver un icono de un globo de la tierra que irá a interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Le voy a pedir que, por favor, seleccione ese icono del globo de la tierra cuando lo vea, y, por favor, seleccione el idioma preferido. Pero si usted está asistiendo hoy a esa reunión en su celular o en su tableta, en vez, le voy a pedir que, por favor, busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o posiblemente el botón de tres puntos para que usted pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esa manera. Si usted es completamente bilingüe, yo le voy a pedir a que, por favor, seleccione el idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Pero si usted sigue es bilingüe, entonces, por favor, sientase libre de escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original. No tienen que ser en un canal de idioma, sino quieren hacerlo, y no tienen que escuchar nuestras voces como intérpretes. Y como siempre, cuando usted seleccione su idioma, puede hacer clic en silenciar el audio original para no escuchar ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for your translation services, and we appreciate you being with us through the whole evening. I'm going to start this meeting as I have done for previous city council and study session meetings, and that's with reading a land acknowledgement. This is my statement. It does not reflect a statement on behalf of all of council. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nuchu, Dene, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who to this day continue to thrive, create, and steward this land. Thank you for your respect in my acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. So also for the record, let it, please acknowledge that Councillor Bosmans has now joined the meeting. If we could have any identification of actual or perceived conflicts of interest on the part of council. All right, then I will proceed to proclamations, and we have two this evening. The first is the International Dark Sky Week. So who will be receiving that? Please come and join me. And after I give you the proclamation, oh, please, absolutely. And after I read the proclamation, you'll have a few minutes to say anything you'd like to say. So let me make sure I got my glasses focused. Okay. Whereas the aesthetic beauty and wonder of a natural night sky is a shared heritage of all humankind. And whereas the experience of standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe, and encourages a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people and out-of-area visitors within Durango. And whereas Colorado currently has ten certified international dark sky parks and five international dark sky communities, one of the most at any state level in the world. And whereas astrotourism within Colorado and Durango brings significant economic benefit to surrounding communities. And whereas Durango received a grant from the state of Colorado to pursue international dark sky community certification. And whereas Durango is home to the Fort Lewis Observatory, which hosts several research-grade telescopes. And whereas light pollution has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences which result in significant impacts to the ecology and health of all communities. And whereas eighty percent of the world's population, including many people in Colorado, live under a dome of light pollution, excessive artificial lighting at night that disrupts natural darkness, and may never experience the visual wonder or ecological and health benefits of living under a dark sky. But living in Durango offers these opportunities. And whereas the International Dark Sky Association headquartered in Tucson, Arizona, is the globally recognized authority on light pollution and has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution and provide free education, resources, and solutions to the public to encourage the protection of and enjoyment of dark skies and responsible outdoor lighting. Now, therefore, I, Barbara Noseworthy, mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim April fifteenth to twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, as International Dark Sky Week in the city of Durango, Colorado, and ask each resident to join me, not only in observing and pondering upon this important week, but also in raising awareness and support for protecting our precious dark skies resources. It's a pleasure. Thank you. Thank you so much. Here we go, and then of you speaking. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. My first day with my husband, forty-two years, he's Nashville physicist, was to go look and tell us something.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you so much for this proclamation. Some of you may know me as Saratoga from the Economic Development Alliance focused on housing. But tonight I am here as a Durango resident and actually as the appointed mentor from the Colorado Tourism Office in Dark Sky, Colorado, for the city of Durango. So I always bring my son to my dark sky work. It's important for the generations to come. So I want to thank you again, City Council, for today's proclamation, recognizing the importance of dark skies in Durango. In International Dark Sky Week, April fifteenth through twenty-second, the council city, in conjunction with Visit Durango, is leading and supporting our certification as an international dark sky place and to further preserve and restore our night skies from light pollution. So as the city's appointed mentor, I'm working to create a Friends of Durango Dark Sky Group, where we'll be taking sky quality measurements, as well as working with the observatory at the fort and connecting them with our library to bring a telescope library program so that everyone can check out the night skies. We also have a website launched, darkskiderango.org. And again, the stargazers among us are grateful to be able to continue gazing upon the stars because of the dedication of our leaders. So thank you again.
The second proclamation is for Parkinson's Awareness Month, and who will be coming up to receive that proclamation?
Lots of programs as well.
Please, you can all join. Please come up. This is also near and dear to hearts. I think we all know someone who has had this or family members connected with it. So please join me. Thank you. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States after Alzheimer's disease. And whereas it is estimated that over 1.5 million people in the United States and an estimated 10 million people in the world live with Parkinson's disease. Closer to home, there are over seventeen thousand known people in Colorado who suffer from this disease. And whereas every year, an estimated sixty thousand people in the United States are diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. And whereas there are millions of people who are caregivers, family members, and friends who are impacted by this disease. And whereas the combined direct and indirect cost of Parkinson's disease, including treatment, disability, and lost income from the inability to work, are estimated at fifty-two billion dollars per year. And whereas there is no known cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of this disease, but we are getting close. Everyone's continued financial support is still needed and appreciated. And whereas the symptoms vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement, rigidity, gait and balance difficulty, speech and swallowing, cognitive impairment, dementia, mood disorders, and much more. Now, therefore, I, Barbara Noseworthy, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Durango, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. And do hereby proclaim April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as Parkinson Disease Recognition Day in Durango to raise awareness and advocacy for Parkinson's disease. Thank you for bringing.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, so much for recognizing this cause, definitely near and dear to our hearts and many others. As we all know, awareness is really one of the first steps toward education and prevention, and hopefully ultimately cure. And in this case, this is important to many of our citizens. And we are really grateful for our sponsor, the Parkinson's Association of the Rockies, that funds many of the exercise classes and the support communities that we have in Durango. And so, guys, if you know someone with this condition or families, please let them know. There are so many resources available right here in Durango. We have exercise programs, yoga, boxing. We have a wonderful support group. We have a caregiver group as well. And we want as many people as possible to benefit from those things. Most importantly, we want everyone to know that you're not alone going through this. We have such a wonderful community right here in Durango. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for. I do want to point out, in case you didn't quite realize, that today is election day. We have little ties to celebrate, and at some point, the city clerk, when they believe they've had some of the election information, you will flag me down, get the information some way, and you'll give a tentative announcement of the results. Is that correct?
Oh, they will be preliminary results. The results will not be certified until the April eighteenth meeting because we do have to allow for overseas and military voters to get their ballots in. But yes, as soon as they, I will get a text message, and I will let you know as soon as I do.
Please do. I know we're all eager to hear. Thank you. Okay, the next part of our agenda is public participation. So if you are here to speak and you haven't signed up, please do so. And I'm going to, then I'll read some of the instructions around that. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this council agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais, and citizens should address their comments directly to city council. As this is a hybrid meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. I also make a point to let folks know that I have read those comments that came in, and I believe other councillors have that same expectation of themselves. When I call and bring you, ask you to come up to the microphone, I'll ask you to indicate if you live in the city, the county, or elsewhere. And the clock will start when you start speaking at three minutes. At about thirty seconds, I'm going to try to wave my hand and catch your attention, which is the signal to please wrap it up within the fifteen, twenty seconds that might be left. And then also, for those that may have raised their hand virtually, I'm hoping that you can look at the screen and also see that clock going as well. So thank you. I appreciate that. And if I mispronounce your name, it's probably because I can't read your handwriting, or I just don't quite know how to pronounce it. So the first person to come up to the microphone to speak is Jasper Welch, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council. Thank you for the people of Durango. I am one of the former mayors who, they refer to us, the Sweet Sixteen. If you've ever been a mayor to a small town, you just have to get good at herding cats and get excellent skills in tuna fish because you can't move cats out of their position, but you can lure them out. And so when the formerers got together, we chatted about this, we put a letter together, which you've seen. And I had a chance to serve when I was on council on a number of the boards and commissions, which I found was tremendously helpful as elected official because there are things in City Hall, we have two new council members will be elected tonight, and there's stuff they have no clue how it works. And so I found that was the liaison role was important. But we're part of a tradition of home rule in Colorado, originally passed in nineteen oh two by the citizens of this great state. Colorado, in Colorado, there was four cities, and nineteen twelve, we became a home rule city, which emphasizes self-governance. So the fact that we have twenty-three commission boards and commissions, and we kind of have a screwed up process is part of our cultural heritage. And maybe we should reinvent it. That's probably not a bad idea, but I don't think we should just drive it off a cliff. So I had a couple comments, and these just represent myself. Can you imagine sixteen mayors actually signing a letter together? I didn't think we'd get the mayor out of, the letter out of committee, but we did. But if we do make these changes, just a couple friendly suggestions. One is, you probably need a transition. And whether that's three to six months, you have existing boards and commissions, some of which were notified, some weren't. And so we probably ought to figure out a transition. Second thing is, I think that council members should be a liaison. The Durango Herald, which never endorsed me for office in three runs, but I've won three times. They said the liaison would only have one way to the council. Now, I think the liaison can talk to the people. Here's the people. I think we can talk together. You know, I found that social media is a pretty ineffective way to communicate with any other human. And so it'd be good for us to talk together. And then three other things quickly, and that is, you have two new members that will be elected to council. I think they should have some input in this process. The other thing is the staff. I listened to the presentation. They asked, put together a pretty good framework for the council to consider. And I think that everyone needs to be involved in that. And then finally, because we tend to take things way too seriously, we should take what we're doing tonight seriously. But really, we can't take ourselves or life too seriously. So I wanted to thank both Councillor Baxter and Councillor Noseworthy for their service. It's not easy to be a city councillor, particularly if you're trying to make changes. And I encourage the rest of the council that's continuing to serve to help the new councillors. When I got elected in nineteen ninety-one, there was no onboarding process. And so I was telling Sweetie a couple stories, and it was pretty, pretty wild, but I survived. And so best of luck in your deliberations on this important topic, but we need boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Thank you, former mayor. I mispronounced this the other day as well. Emily Frojen?
Frojen, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Emily Frojen. I'm a resident of Durango, and I also do energy and climate work for San Juan Citizens Alliance, which is a local nonprofit with over a thousand members and five thousand supporters. And I'm here today to talk on behalf of our local members and supporters in favor of Durango's energy performance contract. I really appreciate the work already done by the city council and by Marty Poole to further the energy performance contract. And I want to urge the city council to authorize the execution of the tax-exempt lease purchase financing agreement for the energy performance contract tonight. That's item twelve-one-one on tonight's agenda. Continuing the energy performance contract is the best way for Durango to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions, lower our climate impact, and have wide-scale energy savings. The city of Durango lacks the expertise and capacity to internalize the necessary aspects of performance contracts. And making an investment in energy efficiency is a huge step towards bettering Durango's climate impacts. is a huge step towards bettering Durango's climate impacts. The Energy Performance Contract allows the city to make efficiency in solar upgrades with no upfront costs while paying back the loan through the savings of energy. This expedites the process and produces savings sooner for the city while also reducing our emissions. It also allows for energy savings down the line once the loan is paid back. Additionally, with the Energy Performance Contract, upgrades can be done all at once rather than in a piecemeal project through city funds. And we are in a climate crisis. Our city needs to act immediately to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions to have any chance at meeting the goals adopted by City Council in twenty twenty-one of having a fifty percent greenhouse gas reduction by twenty thirty and a hundred percent greenhouse gas reduction by twenty fifty. The full Energy Performance Contract is the only way that Durango can meet these goals and is a necessary step in making our progress towards there. The City of Durango needs to be a leader in moving our community towards meeting the greenhouse gas reduction goals adopted by City Council. And the Energy Performance Contract is the way to do it. So for all those reasons, I ask the city council tonight to approve this final step that's necessary to get the Energy Performance Contract back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. The next person to come to the microphone is Sarah Tober. Oh, okay, great. All right. Rick Cobb. There we are.
Hey, folks. Rick Cobb, Durango, Three Springs, actually. I spoke here a couple of months ago after we had first heard about the proposed board and commissions reorganization. I attended a lot of the Parks and Rec meetings and that was where I first heard about it. So certainly since then, there's been a lot of public input at public meetings and then the newspapers and things. And I can't say that after looking through five hundred and seventeen pages of the packet agenda tonight that there's been any changes to what I saw a couple of months ago, which is disappointing if lots of public comments have not made their way into any type of policy change so far that I've seen. You know, for example, on page one ninety, they talk about the Services and Operations Board, which is supposed to handle the non-financial items that would go to the Financial Advisory Board. And that's about eighty percent of the topics that were called out in that document. Where are people going to talk about pickleball? Where are they going to talk about e-bike policy? There is no board because on page one ninety-five, which is the org chart of all the boards, Services and Operations Boards isn't on there. So there are some inconsistencies that I see. Also, the number of people who were to transition from existing boards. I've seen the chair and the vice chair of various committees joining the new boards and now it says five members and seven members. So you're apt to lose a lot of qualified knowledgeable people who are volunteering their time. And certainly, if we're getting a benefit for this much cost to reduce the cost on city staff time, how can you not expect the quality of what's being delivered to go down as well? So we need to look at the cost benefit analysis of what's posed. I do think there's room for improvement in terms of overlap of certain committees. And in particular, I can't imagine you guys getting recommendations from Parks and Rec Board to spend money this way and natural lands said spend it this way, multimotor sense this way. That doesn't help you guys. So I do like combining natural lands, parks and rec, and multimodal, at least to the extent that the multimodal tasks are things like the Amis River Trail. I don't know that other things would be appropriate, but I understand the desire to get some things done before we have two wonderful councillors who are leaving us. One of my favorite sayings from Stephen Covey is, you know, direction is more important than speed. So I'd urge us to take our time and maybe let some new councillor members come in to help incorporate more public comment before we make a decision. And I'll see what Terry says. I assume he's going to be presenting on what's to come if it's adopted as it stands. So hopefully it won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. I cannot quite read the handwriting on the next person. David Lusman? Thank you. And now, as David is coming up, I will say, for the public as well, there was a study session today where we did a talk at length about the boards and commission meeting and the proposed restructuring, and that will be discussed again later this evening. Thank you.
I apologize for the handwriting. I am an engineer. So my name is David Lucian and I am not a resident of Durango, but I do live in the county, in La Plata County. And again, I have almost three years or three decades of electric utility experience. So I'm talking about your contractor, EPC contract, and I'm in favor for it. I commend you all for what you're all trying to do. And I know this is the second phase. You've done the audit part. And what, in the industry, this has been known as nega watts. But this does is keep you, if you can save any energy, keeps you from building another power plant. Yes, it could be solar, it could be wind, but unfortunately, it could be natural gas or coal. So I just want to come up here and say, as a city council and mayor, thank you. Thank you for going through this process and please go to the completion because this is, again, nega watts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. See. Werner, Werner Heber. Please come up.
My name is Vayama Hyber.
I apologize. You'd think I'd get it right.
I live at Montseveon, Loxborough Street. This is an unusually short comment for me. I normally have much more to say, okay? But what you're doing today, I hope you're going to approve the Energy Performance Contact, the authorization of the contract. But it's important to notice that this is a long process, has been a long, one step in a long process of addressing climate change and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So I want to thank you, the council manager, Marty Poole, and staff for having guided Durango in this process where you now will be hopefully will be approving the authorization, authorize the Energy Performance Contact. So thank you for all your work.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hyber.
Thank you, too.
Seth Bertney. I'm not seeing you in the, oh, there you are. Okay. Please come up.
I'm here also to speak again about the, you know, pending dissolution of the city advisory boards, which I am completely against for any number of reasons. So I'll just speak to a few. First thing, I was looking at my email tagline, which reads, connect, communicate, and collaborate, which is something I strongly believe in. And I honestly believe that the boards are one of the best and most effective tools that the city council has to connect, communicate, and collaborate with its community. And I think forfeiting that line of communication is a real threat and something I would advise against. Or if one were to do it, do it very thoughtfully and very carefully rather than the way it's been proposed. I think what we have is we've got the ability to collaborate and leverage the resources and skill set and support and honestly, the the zeal of your community in community decisions, which is such such a value, such a benefit. Having a vibrant community and having people involved in that vibrant interaction is something we should applaud. We should be proud of the fact that we've got this many people and generally find multiple people serving in these boards versus towns where they try to find someone who will potentially sit on a board to do something that no one wants to do and no one cares. It's not that way here and we should be excited by that. And it's something I think to dismiss it is a wrong to the community at large. I think we've got the opportunity to skate to where the community is going. And honestly, things are changing. We are not mining metals anymore. We live in a extraordinary, extraordinary part of the country. And to skate to where we're going, we've got challenges like climate change. Have we got an aging population? We've got all these things. And involving your community as things change and if things do change is exactly how you make progress successfully versus, you know, getting off the rails or following some practice that was imagined ten years ago and no longer applies. No one thought ten years ago pickleball would be a thing, but here we are today, right? Investing in what is popular and worthwhile, I think, is the goal. And popular is part of that equation. It has to be something the community wants. And can you always get that with staff? I've worked in organizations and I know how you can kind of get locked in a system. You start to listen to yourself or you listen to your bubble. And I think it's important to just get direct community involvement regularly and as often as possible. We've got the ability to develop a sustainable competitive advantage in the qualities we enjoy as a community. We have natural lands and climate and outdoor spaces that are remarkable. And we should leverage our community to advance that as best we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth. Jody Fertney.
I'm Jody Fertney, Durango, Colorado. I want to thank Barbara and Kim for your service. I've been here, lived here for twenty years and I've come before this council and a couple of times with you all as as council members, and I'm really going to miss you all. I cherish your, you know, your input and all that you've done. I also am speaking on the boards and commissions. I I'm completely against the proposal that you all have come up with. I just want to ask, what is public participation worth? And Seth had, you know, alluded to that as well. There's thousands of hours that people that are very talented people, very smart people, very engaged people are giving to this council and to this community. And we shouldn't just have this cost benefit analysis that says we can save a couple hundred thousand dollars and that's not, what is this people's time worth? I mean, they are giving the time and they're getting out really good, I think, very good results. What have I seen over, when I've been in, you know, this, some of these very interesting things that have come up, like a bridge over Thirty Second that was like this monstrosity? And it was the boards and commissions and the council working together to kind of figure out a better solution. That's what happened. What if it was if we were just living in a bubble, talking to ourselves, like you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily get a better decision. Who would I go to to get our trail up Raider Ridge that we spent fifteen years trying to get? Is this going to be some financial board that doesn't care about that? There are hundreds of people that use that trail. And, you know, that's something that I think is really important to our community. There's the e-bike policy that I've been very vocal at advocating for, and I appreciate that you all have approved that. But that's this financial board, who are they going to care about that? I mean, I just, I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that we just don't pave over paradise. Would we have an Amis River Trail without the boards? Would we have just thousands of block homes? I know we want affordable housing, but I don't want to pave over all, pave over every green space that we have to get there. There has to be community participation. So I really feel like the proposal is drafted, throws out the baby with the bathwater. I think you can tweak it, as Rick was saying. And I would really like to, hopefully, you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next is Douglas Snow.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Douglas Snow. I'm a resident here in Durango. I'm also running for city council. I am here to talk about the advisory boards. I am here to ask that you do not do that or to hold off on it or to vote no on it. As the other people that have spoke on the topic, they've said it probably better than what I could. These are things that we need in our community. And just going and pulling off these boards is what, you know, it seems like. It seems like we're getting in a vehicle and driving as fast as we can towards a cliff and not caring about that there's a cliff ahead. We need to talk more about this if it's something that, you know, it's one that you all want to go ahead about. But it's something that we should take caution with in going forward instead of just all of a sudden we're just going like, okay, these boards, they're out of here. We don't care about them anymore. And then just trying to go ahead and proceed forward. We need to understand where we've come from on this and not to go forward blindly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Sweetie Marbury.
My name is Sweetie Marbury. I am a Durango resident and I've been here almost fifty years in our beloved town. I am a former mayor and I'm part of the Sweet Sixteen who sent the letter objecting to the reorganization of the boards. I served on a board when I was a city resident. And I am a broken record in my objection to the restructuring of the Boards of Durango. I listened to the presentation today by the staff about how they're going to reorganize all of the public. And this happened at three thirty today. Where were any of you? Well, guess what? You don't know what's happening. And so I object to anything happening tonight when there's been no public input about what happened today at three thirty. There's been no board input about the restructuring. It sounded today from the conversations that all councillors were voting in favor of this disaster except councillor Bosman. I appreciate that. Not only will public presentation be a ghost, but also the expertise will be lost. All the institutional knowledge that has been on those boards and all that could come from the boards that cannot be replaced by a Financial Advisory Board. I remember the mayor of Park City telling me that they had to pay board members because there wasn't enough people volunteering in Park City to make up a board. Look at Durango. Look at all the fabulous people that sign up and say, choose me. I want to participate. I want to give back. That can't be replaced. Durango has so many talented men and women on those boards and especially the boards that handle the sales tax of two oh five to twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen. I really object as a citizen if you dissolve those boards that work with the sales tax. I voted for those sales tax. If you ever think the two remaining, three remaining city councillors that anyone's going to vote for the Library Metro District, I saw that for April of twenty twenty-four, without having public input, you're dead wrong. You're just wrong. Thank you, Mayor. Three thirty today, there was staff presentation. That's not enough time. I'm asking you to postpone this, vote no, and let the new city council hear and make a difference and have this room full of people giving you feedback. That's what's really important in Durango. Not what, not what a couple of city councillors want to do to have this disaster in our, by dissolving our boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sarah Kelly. There we go.
Hello, my name is Sarah Kelly. I'm currently the Chair of the Multimodal Advisory Board. For how much longer? I do not know. That depends on you all. I really respect the effort by staff and council to improve this process of receiving better public input. Better public input. I did attend your study session and I did get the quick overview of what you're planning to do. And I can tell that a lot of effort and thought has gone into that. However, I am very concerned that replacing issue-specific boards that address narrower topics like the multimodal transportation, likes Park, Parks and Rec, replacing them with meanings that are Replacing them with meetings that are going to occur every other month that are going to cover all city topics. I think that is not a good idea. I think most of us, if you've attended city council meetings, a lot of times you look at the agenda and you're like, there's a million things on this agenda. There's going to be a bunch of people commenting. Do I have time to go to that meeting and listen to all all that other information and sit through topics? When all I really want to do is complain about the state of increased speeding on my street or given up, give an opinion on a single project on a park in your neighborhood. So I I just think that's one of the things that I saw in the proposal this afternoon that I'm concerned about. But I only got that little tiny peek of of what your plans are. So I think the current structure that we have allows people to join a meeting addressing a narrower range of topics that they are concerned about and to quickly provide their comments on the specific thing they're concerned about. So I urge council to leave this decision to the incoming council and allow time to better vet this issue and to provide a smooth transition to whatever comes next, whether it is along the lines of what staff has worked on or if it is taking some more input from the boards as they exist now. And so away from that topic, I also want to express my strong support for the energy performance contract. I did a large part of my career doing greenhouse gas emission quantification and verification. And this time type of work is going to be very important to our future in in making sure that we can get our greenhouse gas emissions down and hopefully the most efficient possible way. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Can the host let us know if anyone virtually has raised their hand to speak during public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we have a few folks who have raised their hand. I'll start with the first. It's Martha Mason.
Great. And I'll remind those virtually to please try to monitor the screen so that we can keep it to the 30 three minute, excuse me, the three minute timeline. Thank you.
Please go ahead, Martha. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Martha.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm Martha Mason. I'm a resident of Hesperus where it's currently blasting us with snow, so I'm not there in person. I'm a multimodal advisory board member representing people who are disabled, disadvantaged and or aging. I watched the study session on Zoom for a few minutes or this afternoon. My comment is about restructuring boards and commissions. I'm not necessarily opposed to the restructuring. However, only a few seem to be seem to want to be combined. And I haven't heard anyone address why those boards and commissions would be confined into a financial board. Secondly, I heard that there are plans for the public to be able to communicate through the website. And I'd like to say that that's not necessarily going to happen with the population that I am here to represent. I'd like to say that waiting until we have new members to vote on things is kind of a cop out. And if it if if that doesn't work for Supreme Court appointees, then it shouldn't work here. I think that that the current council should start working on these things and that it should continue. Fourth, I now have an open line to Durango Transit, which would end if if some of the measures that y'all are proposing take place. And I I think that I would be at a disadvantage trying to participate in the process. Fifth, I don't have confidence that a financial advisory board will be thinking about people who are disabled, disadvantaged or aging. I I I just don't believe that. Having said all that, I think that some of the issues you should be looking at are better training for members on their roles and responsibilities and what the council wants. And that 350,000 is small change in your budget. And this whole process could be designed to be cheaper if that's the big issue. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Martha. And next, who do we have? Who's raised their hand?
We have Merle Webb.
If you'll please allow Merle. I didn't hear the last name, Mr. Weck. Web. Please, thank you.
Okay. So my question is, and and maybe this is not the right place to ask this, but can somebody in a nutshell tell me what the reasons are or the logic is behind the dissolution of the board? Of the the advisory boards?
Mr. Webb, we we do not respond to questions from the dais, but we do.
All right, okay. So from what I understand is I wrote an article and Harold was kind enough to publish it on Sunday. And everything I see points to management failure on behalf of the city council. So Barbara, I saw an article from you alleging another council member needs to be brought before the ethics board. And you considered him a liaison. Now, in my experience with all the boards, none of this has ever been explained to any board member that I know of on the board I participated in. In other words, you, the city council failed to provide governance, at least minimal governments on on the roles of the city council, on the roles of the advisory board. And now you're coming out to say the advisory boards aren't functioning properly. Well, I'm saying, and and I'm actually speaking to the new board members coming on, the new mayor, that I I mean, this is amazing. How can you begin to say that the boards are failing when the management practices are not near up to speed? So I would encourage the new board members to vote against the dissolution of the advisory boards. It's the only avenue we have that that allows, you know, Durango citizens and La Plata County citizens insight into board activities. And if the board does not wish to be transparent, well, this would be the perfect avenue to do that. So I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Has anyone else virtually raised their hand?
Yes, next we have David Moller.
Thank you. Go, please go ahead, Mr. Moller.
Hello, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't be there tonight. Are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. First off, I just want to say I echo the letter that was sent by the 16 mayors. In the time that I've spent participating in city boards and public participation, I don't know if I've ever seen a letter that have had that much cohesiveness and the amount of backing by former mayors. And although I'm not necessarily opposed to the restructuring, I would say that just that letter alone should create a cause for pause. Because it certainly sounds the alarm as to maybe there is some some more feedback that could be be heard. I applaud the staff for the preparation and and for their time presenting to council during the study session. I I do believe that the staff was following kind of a one sided direction of how that they can restructure versus is the current structure working? And so I would just ask that, you know, hopefully both sides of the current structure versus the new structure was well articulated. Given the amount of public comment and the letter that was sent, I don't feel that that was. Tonight, Counselor Bosman, Counselor Yusef and Counselor Buell, I ask of you, I urge of you to vote no tonight, but not to give up on the mission of restructuring, but to ask for more public comment in a study session that involves the board chairs of the current commissions. So again, I echo what's been said tonight. I haven't heard anyone really agree. And so that alone, I would hope, would cause for pause tonight. I'm not asking to kick the can, but at least ask for more participation, more public comment and to ask for a study session in regards to this. Counselor Baxter and Mayor Knowsworthy, I just wanted to say thank you for your service and thank you for your time. Appreciate what you guys have done for the last four years for our city. And I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Moller. I didn't get that right. I'm sorry. Moller, yes. Um, we have another person who's.
Yes. Mayor, next is Lisa Ray.
Oh, please, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lisa Ray. I reside in Durango. And I'm here to speak on the energy performance contract approval of the last step tonight. I concur with those who've spoken before me tonight, asking you to take that final step. I want to remind you that most of you were not sitting there when this topic emerged way back in 2018. And since then, you have hired a new sustainable programs manager, I believe that's the title, in Marty Poole. I believe that Marty has done his homework. He has answered all of your questions. And I trust in his recommendation that he has studied this thoroughly and educated you guys thoroughly on this. Please do not hand this over to the new counselors. It is too difficult and complicated of a topic, I think, for them to take up without many hours, weeks, maybe even years of study. So take the step tonight to approve that final piece of this energy performance contract. And let's get going on these projects. It has been too long in the making. Thank you all for considering this, listening to all the information and to all of us who have been pushing for this for years.
Thank you, Lisa. Is has someone else virtually raised their hand to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have one more person who would like to speak. They're a phone number though, so they're going to have to tell us. Whoever's calling in, you you have permission to speak.
Mayor Knowsworthy, John Simpson, city resident. I support what everyone else has been talking about as far as the boards and commissions. The one point I'd like to bring up is one of your best decisions as a counselor was to lower the water rates. Your decision saved the residents approximately $2 million last year. And that's real savings, real money. That's not a calculated savings that was put together to justify the elimination of the boards. And that water rate reduction came from the infrastructure advisory board. The board also helped with your wise decision to relook at our the future water supply. However, I think the elimination of the boards is a symptom of a much larger problem. And that's putting the citizens at the bottom of the org chart. The this problem manifests in two other agenda items you have tonight. First, you have a decision to finally release the financial documents that the judge ordered you to release more than a month ago. I've given you plenty of opportunities for me to help you, but over and over again, you go to executive session and make the wrong decisions. Secondly, you're asked to approve a 20 year debt without a vote of the people. The EPC sounds like a good idea, but it's really a 20 year debt. And those debts should be voted on by the people of the of the of the community. And when I see the org chart, org chart being flipped on its head, you know, that where the city manager is directing the council and the council is not listening to the people. That's when things fall apart. Lawsuits are lost. Citizens write nasty letters in the Herald. And the next 20 years of counselors are going to have to pay the debt you're being asked to approve tonight. So, you know, I I the issue I see is how you're not following the citizens' directions. You know, we are the boss and you work for us. So please put the citizens back at the top of the org chart. Mayor Knowsworthy?
Thank you, John. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Has anyone else raised their hand to speak virtually?
No, Mayor, no one else has indicated that they would like to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. On on that, we will move to city operational updates from the city manager.
Do not have me this evening.
All right. Thank you. If folks are stepping out, I'm going to take a minute in case people want to move out before I proceed to the next. So two minutes? No, we can take a two minute break. Thank you. Not a worry. We will we will return in two minutes. Counselor Bosman, are you in the area? Thank you. I'm going to bring us back. Have this goal to be more hydrated. So Uh, so my, too much information. So on to the review of the consent agenda. No, he has no update. No. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be covered, will be considered under Agenda Item Nine. Can we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Eight point one is approval of minutes of the city council's special meeting on March twentieth, twenty, two thousand twenty-three. Eight point two is approval of minutes of the city council's special meeting held on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Eight point three is approval of minutes of the city council's study session held on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Eight point four is approval of minutes of the city council regular meeting held on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Eight point five is approval of minutes of the city council's special meeting held on March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Eight point six is discussion and possible action approving a resolution and memorandum of understanding, excuse me, between La Plata County and the city of Durango concerning construction of a Doppler Weather Radar Station at the Durango-La Plata County Airport. Eight point seven is discussion of possible action approving Powerhouse Science Center Maintenance Funding Requests and the accompanying resolution to make amendments to the two thousand twenty-three adopted budget for the request. Eight point eight is final reading of ordinance zero, two thousand twenty-three, zero, 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 six, approving the annexation and initial, initial zoning for the Cummins addition, annexation to the city of Durango and declaring an effective date. Eight point nine is final reading of ordinance zero, two thousand twenty-three, zero, 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 seven, for the purpose of amending zoning of row property located within the city of Durango, Colorado, pursuant to Chapter twenty-seven of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango and declaring uh, an effective date. That's the Adamus Mountain Vista Rezone. And eight point ten is final reading of ordinance zero, two thousand twenty-three, zero, 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 eight, amending portions of Chapters two, three, four, six, and seven, twenty-seven of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango, Land Use and Development Code, including adding a definition for a new food truck pod use and declaring an effective date. Mayor, uh, if it would meet with council's approval, I would ask that items eight point three and eight point five, both sets of minutes, are pulled from the agenda pending further revision to be represented at the next meeting.
Is there approval from, or support from council for this?
Yes.
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 Yes. Does any counselor wish to remove, so that would be, any motion that would be made would be with those to remove from it. Does any counselor wish to remove any other item from, from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove eight point seven, please.
Does anyone else have an item to be removed?
I had the same item, so.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, recognizing that eight point three and eight point five would be, would come back to council at the next meeting and removing eight point two? Is there a motion?
Eight point seven.
Oh, excuse me, eight point seven, yes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? May we have the vote, please?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pritam Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. All right, um, Counselor Baxter, I believe you asked for eight point seven to be removed?
Yeah, so may, um, when I look at the first page of the agenda documentation, um, the, the three items that are being, um, recommended for approval for the Powerhouse Science Center Maintenance Funding Requests are the HVAC replacement, the repainting of the smokestack and parking lot striping, uh, which totals forty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. But I did notice in some of the other documentation that there was, um, I know that that's not the final request that we're looking at, but there was also some indirect costs and contingencies included. And I didn't know if that uh, was going to apply to our actual, um, the actual recommendation or not, or if that was sans those and just the three items. And I believe Counselor Bosmans had some questions too.
Yes, your questions, and then we can try to have those questions addressed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not exactly sure of, of what your comment was there, Counselor Baxter, but similar on the supporting, first of all, I'm very supportive of the powerhouse. I'm very glad that we're gonna be able to support you financially on some uh, expenses that are actually asset improvements. Uh, but, so that's great, and I look forward to any other ways that we, as a council and a city, can support the success of the Powerhouse Science Center. And going back to what was provided, it has a line item for landscaping, twelve thousand dollars. And it's not part of the budget, uh, agenda item that was approved. And I think the language is a little bit about it being a city task versus a powerhouse task, but maybe you can explain it or whoever pulled that one out of the request.
Aaron, I see you up to the microphone. Would you like to address the questions raised?
I can address both, and then Jeff is here, so if you need to help me and add any additional detail, that'd be great. So, um, to your comment around the forty-eight thousand dollars, that is not inclusive of the contingency of the discussion we had with, uh, Jeff and the team, what there was to submit the requests that are directly related to landlord costs, but not inclusive of any additional contingency costs. And so we can work through that if it does go on above and beyond to work through that process of addressing those additional costs. And then your question, I think, Counselor Bosmans, was why weren't all the requests included, particularly the landscaping? Um, the, in discussion with Jeff, the, the, the work there was to, more of a beautification kind of expense for the powerhouse and not necessarily a direct uh, landlord cost. So that is, even though the powerhouse submitted the, the total requests, staff's recommendation is to only include the HVAC, the smokestack, and the parking lot striping.
And Mayor and Council, if I can add, this kind of comes from the discussion of where we did place this in the budget request, uh, a few months ago, and the direction from the council or the comments we received from council were to start with the landlord, uh, landlord obligation cost first, and then any of the additional capital costs would come after receiving a presentation from powerhouse in regards to their strategic plan adoption and their business plan, in which the council then would be able to make decisions based on if they wanted to include any additional capital costs.
This landscaping is not the landscaping that we funded through the, it's a separate, the um, lodger, lodger tax or what, was that what it was? Or no? Durango crates, thank you, something. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was a separate project.
Well, thank you, because that answered my question. I just wasn't certain there. So, um, I would go ahead and move that we approve item eight point seven discussion, uh, approving the Powerhouse Science Center Maintenance Funding Requests and the accompanying resolution to make amendments to the two thousand twenty-three adopted budget for the request.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I wanted to follow up on that question on the landscaping. Is, it does, the existing lease arrangement with the powerhouse, does it exclude or include anything with landscaping? As well as, I believe there is some discussion taking place between the landlord and the tenant's responsibilities, uh, clarifying that in a new lease or an updated lease, is this going to be addressed in the next one?
Yeah, I, uh, that item, it was misunderstanding. I have my part of conversations with, um, city manager Madrigal and, um, and Aaron. Um, the portion of the property that we were proposing, um, funding through this request is actually outside of our lease. It's a, it's a parcel of city property that um, sits between Fourteenth Street and the powerhouse's leased property. And that was the, the origin of the misunderstanding is that we recognize that beautification. Happy to defer any discussion or decision on um, whether there's a pathway to, to improve that intersection. Uh, and we're content, happy to have that item removed from the request.
Okay, very good. That was all that. Appreciate it.
Any more discussion?
Just a, a comment that I'm, uh, happy to be seeing, uh, this come, uh, to council for action.
May we have the vote?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Let me grab mine. The next is, uh, I have two different items on my agenda, I'm afraid. Uh, one calls for the airport. Oh, no, no, sorry. Next is item eleven point one, uh, discussion and possible action on the approval of an employment agreement with Mark Morgan as the city attorney of the city of Durango. And this is a council discussion. We, you have, um, a contract, uh, that has been signed by, uh, Mr. Morgan. And the, uh, we need a vote to accept that, approve it, and then make it official with our candidate. Is there any, uh, motion to approve that contract?
I would move that we approve an employment agreement with Mark Morgan as the city attorney of the city of Durango.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm so impressed with how staff-supported council in making this happen and with our search firm who helped us make this happen in a very short period of time. And, um, it'll be great to have a full-time, um, city attorney, and I want to say thank you very much to Bill Tethill for filling in as our interim. It's great. You're, you've been given great, um, advice, and I like your attitude. So, thank you very much.
I also would like to, um, thank Bill for coming in and, uh, being with us these past three months, and he'll still have some time with us into the future and, uh, anticipating our needs. So, thank you, Bill.
Yes, thank you. It wasn't an easy to jump in when you're dead, um, amid, uh, two transitions, and I appreciate all of your work with us. Thank you.
I would add too, thank you for being available from, um, all over the place and, uh, being present for us and a lot of times of need. Thank you very much.
And if I can add one item, I would like to, uh, just mention that I have, uh, had occasion to see a number of city attorney recruitments and county attorney recruitments over the last few years. And that, uh, I am impressed with the, uh, speed uh, in which you've handled this. The quality of your applicants was, uh, quite good. Uh, and I'm, was very pleased to see you had a number of, of excellent uh, candidates to, uh, select from. Um, and that has not always been the case in some searches I have been aware of and involved in, in the last couple of years, some places have difficulty attracting some talented candidates, and you were able to do so in this case. So, I've had occasion to speak with Mr. Morgan on several occasions now, in addition to his interviews, and, uh, I think you'll be happy.
Thank you. We'll end the discussion and call the vote. Thank you.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pritam Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Mayor Nozworthy, I just, uh, before we passed on, and I wasn't sure where I was gonna add this, I was gonna do it. Actually, a discussion, so I apologize. But I just, can I just say a few notes about Mr. Morgan?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, um, I, I wanted to agree, um, with Mr. Tethill that I thought the process with Baker Chili was outstanding, um, smooth and excellent. And I wanted to just suggest for the record that, uh, Mr. Morgan or, um, that, who we are just voted on, um, for our city attorney, he really stood out to me personally for several reasons. His work experience for the city of Gretna, community of twenty thousand people, um, with over three hundred, with about three hundred and fifty employees, really surprisingly similar to here in Durango as a city attorney there for almost fourteen years. Um, in his role as a city attorney for the city of Gretna, he also developed growth and revitalization strategies for their downtown district and suburban development. He managed audits to verify data involving assets, income, and liabilities. He's very familiar with councils. He understands his role in working with councils. And he understands how to help resolve conflicts with council and is very familiar with those processes. He himself has served on Jefferson Parish School Board, so he's well aware of, uh, politics and some of the most extreme environments of school boards. He has very good communication skills. His answers were honest and forthright. Um, and his experience, I think, is exactly what we, uh, need, um, in addressing our ever-increasing legal workload facing the city. So, I really look forward to getting him on board, and I wanted to thank him for his interest.
And Mayor Protem, thank, Mayor Protem, thank you for that um, wonderful recap of his experience, what he brings to the city. And I think, I thank you for speaking, at least, for my, on my behalf as well, for welcoming him to the community.
Yeah.
Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, that was a great job. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you, you summarized his capacity very well. Thank you. Right. Now we will move to the public hearing portion of our meetings, and, um, we will call up, the first part is a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing execution of a tax-exempt lease purchase financing agreement in connection with an inner Energy Performance Contract for the city of Durango. The way we proceed in this matter is, um, the staff member will give a presentation. We will open it up to public comment. There will be public comment. And then, um, we will close the public comment. Staff will ask questions of the staff member or, um, if there's other people here appropriate, or developers, in some cases, not this one. And then, um, we will, would, go to whether there's a motion on the floor or not. So Marty, please, um, welcome. And what time, what's, uh, what number is this of you coming before us?
And, and all or for this in particular?
Just this one. In, in the past year, baby, we should just narrow it down.
So I believe this will be the, the third time coming for, or fourth time coming before council to discuss this. Um, so, thank you, uh, Mayor Nozworthy and Council. Um, uh, my name is Marty Poole. I'm the Sustainability Manager for the city of Durango. And heading into this and also going off of the public comment, I want to acknowledge the work of my predecessor, Imogen Ainsworth. Um, as you all know, this effort started back in two thousand eighteen, and she put a lot of work into the first part of this project. So, there will be two items.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, thanks. Yep.
Sir.
Yep, no problem. Um, well, that two for titles. Um, technology. Um, so, there will be two items, uh, before council tonight, uh, with regards to the Energy Performance Contract. Uh, this is the lease purchase agreement. Um, also, it's been referred to as the Tax Exempt Lease Purchase Agreement or the TLP. Um, so this is the funding and financing mechanism for the Energy Performance Contract. Uh, later this evening, there's also, um, a resolution for consideration that is actual, the actual approval of the contract itself. So, um, you'll see some repetitive information here, but this is specific to the funding agreement. So, this is a high-level breakdown of the finance, uh, and the financial impacts of the Energy Performance Contract. Um, so you see, we have, um, about four point nine million dollars after the grants and, uh, incentives are factored into the overall construction price. The total maximum cost, including measurement and verification, MNB, is just over seven million dollars. Um, the financing, uh, the proposed financing, um, is, uh, uh, well, I'll get to the exact number later in the presentation, but, um, it's about five and a half million dollars. And at the interest rates we have seen, um, we can anticipate about a hundred thousand dollars of interest payments on that financing approach. Um, the Energy Performance Contract is slated to result in about a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars of utility savings, six thousand dollars of, uh, maintenance, operations and maintenance savings, again qualifying for, um, the utility rebates, the Department of Local Affairs grant funding, and Inflation Reduction Act Federal Solar PV and Roof Replacement Funding, which were reviewed at the last city council meeting. Um, we also will, as the city is, um, putting together our funding package, we are proposing, um, about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of city funds to cover both upfront, uh, funds that are not, uh, appropriate to, uh, finance the lease purchase agreement, and then also to cover contingency and some of those measurement and verification costs. Um, the progress towards the twenty thirty emissions goals. Um, you see that, uh, on the facilities that we're performing the EPC on, we are You see that on the facilities that we're performing the EPC on, we are cutting our emissions almost in half. And we are three quarters of the way towards our energy or our renewable energy goals. We're installing, this project is installing a substantial amount of solar energy. So, I've shown this slide before, but just to give a rundown, self-managed has been analyzed at length. And we ran one more modeling analysis. Could we do this? Could the city of Durango do this another way? We really don't see a viable option for achieving the same level of results doing a self-managed kind of piece-by-piece à la carte option, if you will. So, we would forfeit the million-dollar DOLA grant. We would not be able to perform the projects in as quickly as we can through the energy performance contract. We would be longer in extending, or we would extend the timeframe of achieving our greenhouse gas reductions. The, the financing agreement specifically, and I'll touch on this more, but it allows for, because it's financing, because we're paying this back over time and there is interest associated with that, but it frees up capital for other projects. So, there's no longer that opportunity cost with upfront capital. And last but not least, the energy performance contracting process specifically has free Colorado Energy Office support from their licensed engineers. So, the last, the most recent financial analysis, I know this is a text-heavy slide, but this is with all, we finally have all of the project costs proposed in the contract from McKinstry. We have some proposed financing options from, from financial institutions on the table, so we can look at interest rates and we can plug all that into a model. So, what's the assumption here? We'll save twelve percent. They're looking at an alternative to the energy performance contract. We will save twelve percent because we won't be paying McKinstry's profit margin and we won't be paying McKinstry for their construction management services. But we will have to pay the five percent city CIP rate. So, we see a twelve percent reduction in project costs under this assumption. But we forfeit the million-dollar DOLA grant. We are not paying for power ed services. We are assuming under this a conservative four percent construction cost rate increase, which you all agree is an extremely low and conservative assumption. We assume that every year, the city would have the capacity to replace about one-tenth of its lighting and water. It would have the capacity to replace about, and cap, capacity and available capital funding to replace that much lighting and water, capacity and available funding to replace one-fifth of the roofing and HVAC. The solar water, the water treatment plant solar project would be the only solar project that we'd be completed because that's the only project that has capital funding identified. And the roof replacements under this assumption would not qualify for the Inflation Reduction Act discount payments because we wouldn't be performing solar on those roofs. So, with all of those assumptions, what do we get? Over a twenty-year analysis period, this includes all of the interest payments. The city would end up paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more to do this alternative scenario. We would not install five hundred kilowatts of solar. We would delay our projects by several years. And we would have over seven thousand additional metric tons of CO2, which is the equivalent of burning seven point seven million pounds of coal. So, we pay more for less. I know that was a lot of detail and, but I really want to drive that point home. So, under the lease purchase agreement, the city would finance a portion of the energy performance contract. The leased equipments, in which in this case is lights and solar PV, as well as some mechanical and HVAC equipment, would be the collateral on that agreement. So, that is what we're leasing. Article five, section twenty-five of the city charter authorizes council to enter into long-term rental or leasehold agreements. And that is, that is what applies in this case. Oh, and lease payments are subject to annual appropriations. Those closed captionings can be tricky. So, for the lease proposals or request for proposals, an RFP was issued on March tenth and responses were due on March twenty-eighth, which gave about twenty-four hours to get some preliminary information into the agenda packet prior to this meeting. We are currently evaluating the best proposals and proposals received back have come in at the range of four to four and a half percent interest and many fixed rate and options for prepayment. So, the ordinance being presented before council tonight is a parameters ordinance. So, council would be voting on an ordinance that allows for the maximum parameters allowable for a lease, a lease purchase agreement. And you may say, why aren't we just voting on the actual chosen lease purchase agreement? And that's because of the timing for bringing an ordinance alongside the timing process for an RFP and, and evaluating financing proposals. Essentially, by the time, if we waited till we had a chosen proposal in hand, by the time we brought that to council, had two readings of an ordinance and went back to that institution, their proposal would have expired. So, we don't have that option. We are bringing this forward in a way that is as, as transparent and acceptable as possible, given the structure of our ordinance process, along with the structure of our RFP process and the timing thereof. So, these are the parameters in the ordinance. It shall not go past December thirty-first, twenty forty. The aggregate, sorry, twenty forty-three, thank you. The aggregate principal amount would be five million, six hundred thousand, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The mental, maximum rental payments annually would be no more than five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And the maximum total repayment would be no more than nine million dollars, nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And those are written in the ordinance. Again, the lease purchase approach is specifically tied to the fact that we will have guaranteed energy savings from the EPC. It allows the city to direct existing capital funds to other projects. So, again, we, we have this, we don't have the opportunity cost from having to choose between capital for this project and other projects. This is not a common opportunity where the city gets to access additional funding for projects. And so, we get to do more with our current available capital. And that is the why, why it's been determined to be the most viable funding model. And again, the approval of the lease purchase is necessary in order to move forward with the EPC under its current scope. And that is crucial. What is the fiscal impact? So, again, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars of interest payments for the next fifteen or twenty years as a municipality. Again, that's an average and based on kind of what we've seen so far from the proposals. There would be an amortization schedule with the chosen financial institution. There's approximately two hundred thousand of annual payments due, which are offset by utility cost savings. Any amount exceeding that, we would look at capital funding to, to offset from the building maintenance fund. This helps us secure over two million dollars in grant funding and federal rebates, which we may not be able to access given our capacity and available of capital funds and allows for seven million dollars of city improvements. So, it is the recommendation that city can down, city council conduct a public hearing to consider public testimony regarding an ordinance authorizing execution of a tax-exempt lease purchase financing agreement in connection with an energy performance contract for the city of Durango. No immediate council action is required following this public hearing, but there will be the first reading of the ordinance slated later for tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. With that note, I will open the public hearing. Has anyone in the council chambers signed up to speak during this portion of the public hearing?
No one signed up there.
Has, thank you, thank you, city clerk. Has anyone virtually raised their hand wishing to speak?
Yes, it's, it's our, our person who called in again, I believe, is John Simpson again.
Please, I, I will remind folks that you have three minutes. And please, the host to type, turn the timer on and to please monitor that as part of your comment section. So, please go ahead, Mr. Simpson. Can the host make certain that Mr. Simpson's mic is available?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm, I'm available now. Sorry about that. There are no worries. John Simpson, city resident. For the record, I sent in a long list of concerns I have with the tax-exempt lease purchase. There, there's two things, the energy performance contract and the tax-exempt lease purchase. All of the rebates and grants that you can receive aren't contingent upon the tax-exempt lease purchase. You can do the, an energy performance contract with money in the bank. And I'm not sure if, you know, people are aware of the sustainability coordinator is aware of how much money the city has in the bank right now. But you guys are having difficulty spending the money in the bank. And it's not a problem of, you, you don't have an opportunity cost problem. You really have more money to spend than, than you know what to do with. And this is a great opportunity to spend that money. And let's say that, for example, there is a problem in the future, what you can do is go issue debt for whatever fund you use, the water. If the water's running out of money, you can go ask the citizens for a debt on that fund. But there's no rush to go into this tax-exempt lease purchase. It'll probably cause you more problems. You know, one of the, one of the terms and conditions is there can be no lawsuits or threat of lawsuits associated with that tax-exempt lease purchase. And that, that's a, you know, that's a pretty concerning requirement. So, you know, what I encourage you guys tonight is send this, you know, go forward on the energy performance contract and figure out a way to finance this with cash on hand or send it back to the citizens to vote. You know, it's, it's very unfortunate that we have returning in votes today that it would have taken no money to add one more question of will you approve debt for seven million dollars for this tax-exempt lease purchase. It would have been zero effort, but it was a, it was a squandered effort, squandered opportunity by the city. And then finally, I think what was important to hear tonight, to hear tonight, was our payments could be up to five hundred thousand dollars per year. Our savings could be two hundred thousand dollars per year. And that's a, that's a very generous two hundred thousand dollars per year. So, we're looking at losing three hundred thousand dollars per year if you go forward with this tax-exempt lease purchase. That is not a financially sound plan and I hope you guys do not vote yes for the tax-exempt lease purchase. Mayor Nozworthy?
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Has anyone else raised their hand to speak on this topic, virtually?
No mayor, no one else has indicated that they would like to speak.
Great. With that, I will close the public hearing and Marty, I'll open it up to council to have questions of you. I will start with anyone who wishes to raise their hand to let me know they have questions. Does anyone have questions of Marty?
You've given this presentation a few times to us, so I think that, for me anyways, I'm, I'm good. I'm excited. I think it's, you know, the best way for wide-scale energy savings and to meet our sustainability goals, like the most efficient way possible. You know, you talk about doing it yourself with you and all your staff that you have or no? Just kidding.
It's a really intern, but she's not, yeah.
Yeah, I think that it's exciting and I appreciate all the time you spent into giving us this presentation numerous times.
If, if there are no questions, can I have a, are there questions? Because we'll also have a discussion period later. Questions of Marty?
Yes, I'll have a question now. Can you elaborate a little bit on the, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Can you elaborate a little bit on the alternative options that you had considered? Which was upfront appropriations from existing fund balances associated with the facilities receiving upgrades and as well as internal financing through an interfund loan from the water fund and combination of those. And then you also mentioned, so that would be one question. And the other question is, you mentioned potential adverse impacts if council fails to approve an ordinance for the financing tax-exempt lease purchase. And since the EPC program will not have an identified funding source, the combined one is we have money in the bank. I think it's over eighty million total fund balance. And, and then you say there's adverse impacts because we don't have the money. So, maybe give us some information on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, with regards to the alternative funding that we had considered. So, one would be an interfund loan from the, the water fund. The thought there being, if there's a balance in the water fund, we could, it's an enterprise fund, so we can't just transfer that money over. The, that fund, it's, it's not a bank. It's a, it's a fund for projects and it's a fund specifically for water projects. And so, you know, there are times when maybe an interfund loan is appropriate, but it's my understanding and speaking with our Public Works Director, Allison, that there are projects identified for the next several years in that fund. And so, here, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul in that instance. As far as available upfront funds, I would actually defer back to council that had your budget retreat. I think you have as clear of an insight as possible of, you know, available fund balances for different types of projects. And if we have five point five million dollars sitting around unallocated, absolutely, let's, let's, you know, take the, the lease purchase off the table and council can vote to allocate five point five million dollars for this project. I've brought this option, or I brought this project before council multiple times. I've never heard that, that, that we had anywhere near that available amount of money. And I've spoken with our budget strategic, strategic planning officer, as well as finance staff and, and city manager, Madrigal, and we've never been able to look at that five point, find that five point five million dollars. Lastly, we will be using the building maintenance fund, which was created just for this purpose. And we're using that to finance the portion of the project that doesn't make sense to do a lease purchase. So, particularly, we're using the DOLA grant funding and some of the building maintenance fund to address the roof and the, the roof and the water fixtures, which it wouldn't be appropriate to finance. And so, you know, part of the, the payback and it, it's hard because sometimes when the numbers are presented, all of those are presented together as a, as a project. And then when we're looking at the lease purchase, we're kind of carving out a portion of the energy performance contract. But I would say those are the ways that the, the alternative funding mechanisms have been, have been analyzed over the last several months.
Thank you, Marty. Other questions?
That's correct. So, the, there's the five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. That is upfront project capital. And then there's also the forty-two thousand dollars of measurement and verification and the one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of contingency. Those will all be coming out of the building maintenance fund. Now, the contingency is contingency. So, it wouldn't necessarily be coming out. And then the measurement and verification is over the course of, spread out over the course of three years.
You have main balance of the project being five point four million and people's five point five million. That means in finance and cost of that financing is for the maximum total payment of nine point two five. Correct? So total cost would be 9.25 million. This upfront cash, so total cost would be, oh, and dollar grant. So that would be total cost of 10.8 million for.
Um, that is not correct. Um, yeah, so the the ordinance uh is putting setting forth parameters. So maximum amounts that we would see. Um, it was the advice of um our financial advisors Hilltop to put that $9 million in the ordinance um so that we wouldn't lose our proposal on a technicality. So um we will be financing right around in the neighborhood of that 5.5 million dollars. And again, depending on our prepayment prepayment schedule, our amortization schedule and the final terms of the contract that we can lock in. Over the course of 20 years, we would be looking at about, it depends, but it would be about 1.5 to 2 million dollars of interest. So um, that's not insignificant. But that is, it's spread out over 20 years. Um, and it so the fight, the maximum financed portion, we could likely see in the range of seven to eight million dollars.
Actually, the package, there is um a page where projected interest rate is 4% and total loan payment is 7.5 million. If I add that number up, that is making total cost of 9.1 million. So I'm correct, 7.5 as well, that you explained earlier, between 7 and 10. Plus the 556 million.
I'm doing the math in my head. So seven, yeah, 7.5. Yeah, that would be pretty close because we're using a million dollars of the um the DOLA grant and um and then upfront financing in the 500 to 600,000 dollar range and then approximately seven and a half million. So yeah, a little over 9 million dollars all told, uh including interest payments for the project. That is correct.
I depending those words, trying to get a little quantification because I compare it to direct construction. So if we get 3.36 million, we would pay 9 million. Is one thing. And then on top of it, some of the projects are under financial question, those water fund. Uh, fund balance combined. And the water front, the water treatment plant has a solar project. If you add all the projects with water and well up, all the costs to the home. So we have certain parts that can finance that. I guess for the financing part, I have asked my questions. Thank you for answering.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Does any other counselor have questions? I do want to make a point of clarification to what Counselor Bosman did kind of re uh discuss. And I I don't necessarily want to argue it, but I do want to make the point that you have made clear to us that when you have to pay a consultant, they're actually, you know, hiring their contractors and there's fees along that. So uh paying for direct construct construction and yet also paying for the consultant fees. Uh, I've remembered previous presentations where you described how many, how what it would take to try to get the staffing to do this ourselves. And it was not a an option as as you presented to us. I also did want to clarify that uh council has never said there's 5 million, you know, you you said you've never heard it and you're right. Council has never said there's $5 million available to put to this use. So on that note, um there is not an action right now. I do believe we will have the first reading of the ordinance under four point 14.1. Is that correct, Marty?
Uh, that's my understanding.
So thank you for your presentation. We'll be coming back to this topic yet tonight.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, mayor.
All right. The next item is a public hearing. No problem. It's 12.1.2. It's a public hearing to review and consider adoption of ordinance to increase Durango Fire Protection District impact fees. Chief Dory, I believe you're going to come up and and make a presentation. Thank you. I'll remind folks that the chief will make his presentation. We'll open it to public hearing. We'll close public hearing and then council will ask questions of the chief. Thank you.
So then should I I should go there and get that to run? Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to show the slide that's up and not all the rest of them. So to start the presentation.
And I'll ask the city clerk, have you received any any updates?
Uh, no, actually, our deputy clerk just left with her ballot boxes right at 7 o'clock. They pulled those from the lobby and from our voter service center in the back, and he is taking those out to the county now.
Thank you very much.
Start your slideshow presentation first and then try to share. Madam Mayor and City Council, thanks again for uh seeing me tonight. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you to talk about the uh impact fee uh change that we're asking for. Uh, I'll remind you that in 2016, the state legislature opened the door for special district fire departments to be able to benefit from uh impact fee programs that would help uh communities uh create a situation where new growth would help to pay for the increases in in infrastructure that were caused specifically by the impacts of them coming to a community. Uh, in 2019, you as a city council uh approved the impact fee program for Durango Fire Protection District and were actually the the first governmental body to approve that. Now, prior to that, we had impact fees in place with several development areas. So Three Springs, Twin Buttes, Edgemont and uh the Purgatory Metro District all already had uh impact fees in place. The MOU that was struck at the time that you accepted that uh required that from time to time, contemplated every two to three years, we should revisit studying our impact fee program to assure that it still fit the needs of the community and was appropriate based on costs, uh capital improvement plans and and all the associated rational nexus that has to be developed to do that. Uh, I I came with a very um condensed slideshow. Uh, and in the interest of brevity, I I'll go through that very quickly. But I would welcome any questions that you have along the way or afterwards, just so that I can make sure that you understand fully what it is that we're doing. As we go through this, I'll just remind you that uh the study takes a look at what the existing combined demand is. So how much uh is our inventory of residential housing? And what is our inventory of commercial square footage? So that we can have some sort of a basis behind what we currently are serving, establishing an anchor point and then uh further projecting what the potential for growth is. And the growth looks like this. The the study shows that we, on average, build 296 additional residential units per year in our community and average 161,000 square feet of new commercial construction. Now, I'll remind you that this is across the the service area of the Durango Fire Protection District. So this is not only inclusive of the city of Durango, but covers the 325 square miles that the fire protection district does. When we initially uh started down this road, there were a lot of questions about why aren't we doing this countywide? Or why don't we just do an impact fee program for the city itself? And because our nexus is based on what our inventory of fire trucks and fire stations and service provision is, it's most appropriate for us as your uh contractual uh service provider to do that on the basis of what is within our system and can be called to bear when we have our our worst day in Durango, much like the the slide that I started out the the presentation with. And I can tell you that as you look at this chart to the right, the colored bars show that across a 20-year horizon window, we believe that we're going to add 5,920 residences uh and 300 or 3,220,000 square feet of commercial space. Um, and then across the 30-year horizon window, you see the numbers there as well. The next part of establishing our rational nexus is to show that the need for expansion of our service is tied to the growth of the community. And that is important to the rational nexus because what that does is it pairs the fact that the growth of the community is driving the need to expand the service. The numbers on this chart, you may be asking yourself, only go to 2020, not because we don't have our call volume data for that. In fact, we ran 3,700 call uh 6,700 calls last year. Uh, but because the other uh demographic information is not caught up to that and only goes to 2020, but uh which was what was available to our consultant. And so we only took this graph to 2020 because we didn't have the partner information of Durango population, unincorporated unincorporated population and La Plata County employment data for this chart. But basically, what you're seeing here is that our growth in call volume is concurrent and takes the same upward slope on a graph that population uh of both the city and the unincorporated areas of La Plata County, as well as the employment data shows. Uh, clearly tying together the fact that as our community grows, so too does the request for service for the the fire district. Following that, what we have to do is we have to determine where are the demands located. And we do that by taking an examination of all of the calls for service that Durango Fire Protection District handles each year and evaluating from what type of uh use those uh calls are generated. And we do that in an effort to identify whether the calls are generated from a commercial or or non-residential uh type of a a business or area, uh residential type of an area, or some of those can't be quantified as either, and so they fall out in the non-attributable portion of that pie. And when you take a look at that, how that falls out, what we find is that uh 51% of the total call volume is driven on or uh by non-residential property uses and 49% is residential. Then what we have to do is we have to determine what are the future capital needs. And this is one of the areas of the graph that really changed based on the fact that construction costs and the costs of the equipment that we have to replace have gotten so high over the last three to four years in the in a post-COVID era. Um, and and what we found is that while we could count on pretty consistently uh 300 to $350 per square foot construction for new fire stations, we're now looking at a factor of $550 per square foot or more, which significantly uh increases the cost associated with building a new fire station. Similarly, we can't even get a new fire truck or an ambulance within a 24 to 36 month period. We have three ambulances currently on order. There are no chassis from which to to build those ambulances. Uh, and and in the same fashion, we have fire trucks that are on order that we're waiting for. They've already been paid for in order to get us in line, and the manufacturers can't get the parts that they need to do that. And so the available inventory to replace our rolling stock needs, the the availability of contractors to come in and do construction work uh is really a guiding factor in how much money it's costing us to uh plan for the capital needs of the future. At the end of the day, uh we come to a total of future need across the 30-year horizon window of 87,499,500. And that's a combination, I'll remind you, of just bricks and mortar projects and rolling stock projects. While we can claim anything uh and utilize um impact fee funding for anything that's identified as a capital need, which would be anything over $5,000 to purchase and last for more than five years, we don't choose to do that. So that that could include things like our air packs, our turnout gear purchases, many of the other things that we need. We don't feel like that's necessarily fair to pass on to uh the the burden of new construction coming in. And we were able to limit our costs attributable to the capital improvement plan by only including bricks and mortar and rolling stock. So at the end of the day, after considering all all those wonderful graphs and and charts, what we find is that there is a need for us to move upward the fee structure that we had uh approved by you in in 2019 to be implemented January 1 of of 2020. And that is uh that the impact fee current in the city of Durango for a single family residence or a one family unit uh would move upward to 1,317. And for commercial space, uh you would pay 2,321 dollars per 1,000 square feet of space created or $2.32 per square foot uh for commercial construction. And um I I had the benefit actually of receiving some of the questions that you asked preliminarily about this. And so I can address some of those now. One of those had to do with the changes. So what are we at currently and how does this change? Um, so residential impact fee currently is 819 dollars and uh would move to 1,317 dollars, and that's a 498 dollar change. Another upward movement was the uh non-residential impact fee. And that's to go from 1,641 dollars per thousand square feet to 2,321 dollars per square feet or 680 dollars per thousand square feet change. The interesting part of this chart is to look at the two factors that are in parentheses indicating that they've actually gone down. And this shows us that our consultant missed uh the amount of growth that we would experience in that time period between 2019 and 2022. That is, we believe, caused by COVID and the fact that as COVID came in in 2020, almost all construction stopped or drastically slowed. And so we didn't hit the mark that they had projected for the creation of annual occurrences of new single family residences, nor did we hit the mark for what they projected for thousands of square feet of commercial space. And so as a consideration of both of those factors, as construction costs and purchase costs have gone up drastically and there were less representative uh spaces built, um what what we get is that need for the change in the fees. Now, um you may be asking yourself, why did I pick this time uh to come in and speak with you about this? And uh recently, uh we were successful in getting both San Juan County, Colorado and La Plata County to uh accept, as you did in 2019, our impact fee plan. And so we have actually uh gotten the opportunity to create an equalized playing field where across the entirety of our service provision district, we will have impact fees and they will all be the same if you accept this change, except for those areas that had those developmental impact fees prior to any of this happening. And those are Three Springs, Edgemont, uh Twin Buttes and And those are Three Springs, Edgemont, Twin Buttes, and the Purgatory Metro District. Those impact fees have been in place for quite some time and have sort of ancient dated formulas for how they're done. But what I I can tell you is that almost exclusively in each of those cases, the impact fees that we're doing here are end up totaling less than the amount that folks would be paying in those areas. So I I feel like it's a good deal. I feel like coming to you at this point with this, at the point when La Plata County has accepted this and we've got the opportunity to now have an equal playing field across both the city and the county areas of our service provision are all really worthwhile things for us to do. And so with that, I I would be glad to ask, answer any questions that you have about the impact fee creation. And I'd like to place just as a caveat that I also brought answers to the questions that Councilor Baxter asked last time I was here, associated with our plan reviews and fire prevention section as well as it bears on this. And I also have answers to the questions that I know that you had about how much have we collected in impact fees across the time that we've had them.
Thank you, Chief. We'll take that portion if council wants to have those questions answered after we go through the the public hearing. So stick around. We're gonna still need you here. On that note, I will open the public hearing to to see, has anyone in the chamber signed up to speak for this topic? And while we're waiting to get that information, can the host tell me if anyone virtually has raised their hand?
Uh, no one has raised their hand yet, Mayor.
And no one has signed up to speak on for this part of the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing. And now I will open it for council to ask questions of the chief. Thank you.
I'd like to hear what the chief has to say in response to our other questions before, because he might answer them.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Sure. So as I recall, you were very interested. As you came on to City Council, I recall, we we actually had the opportunity to meet and you shared with me concerns about the fire department's process for plan reviews, as well as the timeliness of turning those around. And so as a result of you renewing those concerns, I had our fire marshal construct, do some data mining and construct some information for you along that line. And the the first that I would tell you is that I I tasked her with really giving us an idea of what the significant changes are in that division and how we provide service since twenty twenty one she chose to address because in twenty twenty, we really didn't change anything under COVID. And so basically, some of the the ways that we've attempted to try to answer to the problems and to create timeliness in the way that we turn work around so that we're not an impediment to to production is that we developed a system for staff and public to be able to track their project. And I've got an example of that that I'll show you in the fourth slide here. What that hopefully does is gives all of our developers, contractors, someone whose project it is, somebody building a single project, the opportunity to be able to look that up and see if they're waiting on anything from us, if we're waiting on anything from them, who the inspector of record is for that project and what the projected timeline is for that project as it moves forward. That was one of the complaints that we heard frequently was that we don't know who we can call. We call the office. Nobody's ever there. And and we struggle to get in touch with the inspectors. We actually reorganized the division and I'm proud to say that we've just had the opportunity to hire a one additional fire inspector, and that brings us back up to full staffing. We had had lost one, so we were down one. And we have added to the budget the opportunity to be able to add another. And then in addition to those, we also had the opportunity to hire a gentleman named Shane Kokavas. And he is our new head plan reviewer. Shane comes to us. We actually got the opportunity to steal him away from DFPC in the section that does all of the state level review of school buildings, colleges, all the state buildings, things like that. And so he's a very experienced plan reviewer, and he has absolutely hit the ground running and is doing a great job. We supported the transition of our administrative assistant in that section to reach out. She was interested in career development anyway. And so in addition to her regular responsibilities as our administrative assistant for that section, she is now certified as a state level permit technician, which basically means that she's qualified to be able to receive all the requests that come in, assure that packets that are being dropped off are complete and that people know what it is that's expected of them, what the next steps are, as well as the payments for those. So it it really works well to streamline our program. And then finally, or actually not finally, we've implemented access to the Blue Beam software program, which it's my understanding that's a very frequently used program by both your community development staff as well as architects and developers. And so we have the same capabilities at looking at those plans as they do. So they come in to visit with us about a project or have a problem with that. They're seeing the same view that they're used to seeing in their own office, which is very helpful to both our people and theirs. And then finally, my staff has been working really closely with your staff, meeting with the the city engineer, working on approval and and project development with the bump outs question with other special events topics. They've actually sort of self-created the opportunity to have a working group that is meeting on a frequent basis to deal with special events that that come up from an enforcement standpoint, things like that. So I I believe I can stand before you and tell you that the division is operating very differently than it was the first time you asked me that question. And I'm really proud of the work that they're doing. To give you some metrics as as a guide to that, the chart on the left, the pie graph, is showing that the the overall plan reviews that occurred, and then how many of those went beyond fourteen days and beyond twenty one days, which are the metrics that that we look at. And I've been told that all of the all of the ones that went to fourteen days and ticked the mark there also went to twenty one days. And in most cases, they were situations where we identified a change in the plans that were needed. And so there was a a significant time period for that to be redrawn and then resubmitted to us. The division actually reviewed in this last year, one hundred seventy percent of what they did the year previous. So a seventy percent increase in their workload and their average turnaround time was eleven point eight eight days per review, which I think is phenomenal. Some of those plans that come in for those commercial buildings are several hundred pages deep and and really take an incredible amount of time to review. So the commitment that they've got on not impeding the process, but but being of help and trying to make sure that those projects get expedited along has has really been sort of the new mantra and and marching orders for that division. We also are providing on average, less than a forty eight hour turnaround time when construction site inspections are requested. And Jess, I know from your standpoint with the background in construction, that's critically important for our developers to be able to get those inspections done so that they can continue on. They have to stop and wait until they can get those done to continue with the project. So it's a big deal getting out there immediately when they're asking for those. The keys to that are are absolutely figuring out ways to keep your staffing up and have the right people with the right attitude going out there. My my ask of them when we sat down to to renovate that division was find a way to coach them into something we can say yes to. And that that really has served us well and works well. This is the last slide in this, and this is an example of what you would see if you went to our website and tried to look up your project. And so we have a project name, the project ID number as it's identified as we receive those plans, the location, last date. Any of this was revised, square footage of the project. I'm not going to read the whole chart to you. But you can see that there's a great deal of information there, and it gives you the opportunity to be able to really check into the status and and what it is that 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 status means for you. What comes next? What are you waiting on? Things like that. So that's my presentation based on your ask about where we are from the the fire prevention investigation. Finally, I I know that one of the other questions that was asked was directly related to how much money has been collected by the district in impact fees since our start. And so I I actually have some charts here. I brought, I think, five or six copies that I'm I'm glad to leave with you guys. But to give you an idea, it's broken down by year, so from two thousand fourteen to year to date present. And for each one of those years, it indicates the total amount of impact fees that we've collected in DMR area, Edgemont, Three Springs, Twin Buttes, and Durango. And because I knew that you'd asked, I also added up for the years that since twenty twenty that we've been collecting impact fees since your approval on this, the total of all Durango areas, which on this chart is Three Springs, Twin Buttes, and and city of Durango. And so in twenty twenty, we collected in Durango, one hundred twenty two thousand two hundred fifty six dollars and ninety two cents. In twenty twenty one, we collected two hundred twenty five thousand three hundred thirty nine dollars and ninety six cents. And in twenty twenty two, we collected ninety thousand seven hundred forty nine dollars and eighty four cents. And as you can see, it kind of swings wildly with what's going on with projects and and what's coming in. I'll remind you that we are collecting for both residential projects and commercial, although we only have inspection duties on the commercial projects that come through. Now, adding to those totals, for a total of Three Springs, Twin Buttes, and Durango altogether, twenty twenty was one hundred forty nine thousand five fifty six. Twenty twenty one was two hundred eighty thousand nine hundred eighty five dollars and some change. And twenty twenty two was one hundred forty two thousand five hundred fifty dollars and nineteen cents. And cumulatively, year to date, this year, we're at forty six thousand five hundred thirteen dollars. So you can see that when we're spending one point two million dollars for a ladder truck, seven hundred fifty dollars for an engine, three hundred fifty thousand dollars for an ambulance, we're not covering very much of our need here, but it is a portion of the need and every every little bit helps us along the way. And so it's important to us to keep this accurate and to continue with every opportunity and venue that we've got to be able to fund our capital needs as we go, so that we have the opportunity to serve you the best that we possibly can in accordance with the service contract.
Thank you, Chief. Did that cover the previous questions that had been submitted? Have we?
Yes, it covered all the questions I asked.
All right. Are there other questions of the chief? We have a motion later on, is that correct?
Well, I have some other questions for him.
Okay.
Given the given the presentation.
Please, please have some questions.
Thank you so much for coming and talking to us, and I really, really appreciate the information on the changes that you've made in the last year in order to help expedite the processes so that things can get built, people don't get frustrated. And the perception isn't that the fire district is an impediment to constructions.
Yeah, that was hurtful to hear, actually. You you motivated me well.
Well, thank you, because I really appreciate it, and I hope that in some way you can find ways to measure that benefit, how that's working. And I really appreciate the coaching program that you're working with, like how to get to yes. I think that's phenomenal. It's all in that continuous improvement that we're working on here at the city. I had a question, though, and I I may not be remembering this correctly, but I thought that when we had the first impact fee discussion, the new fire station was not included in the impact fee amounts because you had that money set aside and the city was paying four million dollars also toward the construction of that building.
Yep.
So why are you including the new fire station now in this new impact fee?
It it is not. So there there are three things, and apologetically, there's one of the slides that I didn't that I cut out of this. I could email it to you, though.
Well, I thought you said you were, so that's.
Right, yeah. So so there there are actually three things that are excluded off of the capital improvements plan. As you recall, I think my number on this was seventy eight million dollars. The actual number ends up coming in much closer to a hundred million, but the cost of the anticipation of the downtown fire is not in included in that, nor are all the impact fees that we collect are subtracted from that ahead of plugging the the capital improvement plan number into the plan. And the agreement based on our service contract with two hundred seventy two thousand dollars a year that's paid from the city to the fire district for the equivalency of the capital money that was contributed by our founding partner agencies, Hermosa Cliffs and Animus, is also subtracted from that prior to the total accumulation of capital costs going into the the study. So those those three things specifically are eliminated prior to calculating what the new impact fee should be. And that was consistent with what we did in the year two thousand nineteen, although we know now that the number for the new fire stations is going to be a great deal more than we thought it was going to be originally.
In your presentation, though, I thought you said that you the fire station and equipment. I thought I heard that phrase. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, I'll I'll just remind you that we have sixteen fire stations and an administrative building. So across that, fifteen of the fire stations and the administrative building are in that. Station two, which is the downtown station, is is not included because it's an existing.
Right. And the other question I had was, you're projecting residential units and and going down over the next twenty to thirty years, but you're still want to buy the same amount of equipment?
Yeah, so the the way that fire departments are set up for coverage, and this is directly related to the rules associated with insuring properties against the threat of fire, is that is that we were required to have a service provision area or station every five travel, you have to be within five travel miles of a fire station to get full service credit to that. And that's what brings us to be able to protect you at an ISO four rating currently. Without being within that service provision area, you would fall to an ISO class nine or ten, which would put you in a a third tier Lloyds of London, sort of a situation for getting homeowner's insurance, as an example, or insuring your business. So it's critical that we have that that travel distance captured. And in each one of those stations, they won't let us just have a station that not have any equipment and it give us credit for that. So we have to maintain the fire trucks in those. You can imagine that our busiest stations are the ones that are in the city and and closest to the city. And so our station three, which is over by bread, our station two, which is downtown, and station one in Boto Park are the busiest stations that we've got. And so those require replacement much more frequently because we run a lot of miles on those units. We have units serving in other areas that are very slow, that run a few calls a year, like our Bondad Station as an example, where I've got a fire truck there serving the community that's twenty four years old. And while you would think, oh, my gosh, twenty four years old, we got to get a new fire truck in there that's way too old to be serving. What is is the the driving factor in that is that its cost per mile to operate, the maintenance costs on it per mile, the the efficiency of the unit in its place, all are the best that we've got in the system because it gets used so infrequently. In fact, at twenty four years old, it's got thirteen thousand miles on it, and the steering on is tighter than the car that I drove in drove here in this evening. So we try to be super efficient with how and where we replace things. We replace them where we have to. We go the distance of buying new things like our new one hundred foot aerial platform ladder truck that we bought to specifically serve the hotel projects that are being built in Drango. And at the same time, recognize the value of legacy equipment that still is very good and very efficient and serves the community well. And so in that way, we hope to be as conservative as we can with how we're spending the money, yet at the same time, making sure that we absolutely can fulfill the community's needs.
I'm glad you brought that fire truck up because that was one of the conversations we had previously about the hotel that was going into the area downtown on East Second or whatever it is. That building's not built yet, but you built you bought the fire truck to service that building.
Yep.
It seems like you would wait until you actually needed the equipment before you buy it, so I'm a little concerned about that.
Yep, it's a fair question. And and let me let me, as basically as I can, without spending another hour explaining ISO. Yep, it's a fair question. And and let me let me, as basically as I can without spending another hour explaining ISO. One of the things that we also know is that if we don't have the correct complements of units for specific areas, then we lose service credit. And before that purchase, we only had two ladder trucks. Both of them are also twenty-four years old and seventy-five feet tall. So we didn't get full service credit for the buildings that are at Three Springs or many of the buildings in downtown Durango because we didn't have a ladder truck that was high enough to get to the tops of those. I can also tell you that for our service provision area, we're supposed to have four frontline service ladder trucks because while we have the downtown area covered pretty well, what we don't have is a ladder truck serving at the DMR area, where, as you know, we've got the biggest building tall-wise in in our in our whole jurisdiction, which is eight stories tall.
Well, then I I hope you're asking them for money in order to buy that truck.
I am indeed. In fact, if you recall, the the impact fees at the Durango or the 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 DMR area have been in place for mu- much longer than City of Durango. That was a an impact fee that was actually negotiated prior to the consolidation of all these fire departments in two thousand two. So it's been in place for quite some time. The total accumulation since two thousand fourteen that's been contributed from DMR is one hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
And that doesn't that doesn't pay for a fire truck that you need.
It it does not.
Oh, it doesn't. So I had just had one more comment, if you don't mind, just.
No, I do want to clarify, though. I I needed to seek advice from our city attorney and our city manager. We will not be having a a call or a motion on an ordinance tonight, so I do want to make that clear. This is the first public hearing. We will have a second public hearing and then the ordinance emotion. And I also wanted to get a sense when we're finished, after Council Baxter, of your timing of bringing that forward in the second public hearing and the motion. And you can do that in the same evening.
Sure.
So please go ahead, but I wanted to make clear that we will not be having a vote on the ordinance tonight.
That's great, because that's more reason for me to get my comments in, because after.
Can be answered.
They can be answered, yes. Thank you.
Great.
I know we've talked about this before, and one of the things that's concerning to the community and and to me is that we have a Fire District that the city is actually not a part of. And so because we are not a part of the Fire District, our nineteen thousand residents do not get to vote for the members of your board. And the city has no way of representing our residents to your board in any way, shape, or form. And yet, we're paying over five million dollars a year, plus the four million dollars in the contract. And so I'm wondering, how do we, you know, when you come to these questions, like, for example, like these impact fees, we don't have any impact, and our community doesn't have any impact on how you operate and why these fees should be the way that they are. So I'm wondering if there's there isn't a conversation that needs to occur about that.
It it's an incredibly astute point that you make, and and you're absolutely right. And the fact that the City of Durango is not in our Fire District, in my opinion, is a travesty. Now, let me let me give you a two-minute history lesson on why that is. Is that for all the years that the City of Durango had a fire department that was a part of the municipal government, the fire protection was paid for through the city's general fund. And that came in the form of mostly sales tax, and I think maybe some lodgers tax, none other funding mechanism. I think there's a two-point-five-oh-one mills legacy pre-tabor property tax that helps with that also. When the consolidation happened with Animus Fire, Hermosa Cliffs Fire, City of Durango Fire, and the Hospital for the Ambulance Service, the voters, based on Tabor rules, had to be asked two different ballot questions. One was, will you create the district? And two was, will you fund the district? And guess what happens when you have to ask two questions? They said, yes, we'll create. No, we won't fund. And so for quite some time after two thousand two and into until two thousand fourteen, we operated as an authority, which meant that the City Council and the Hermosa Cliffs Fire Board and the Animus Fire Board and the DFPD Fire Board that had been created but was not funded, so we're a lame duck board, all had a say in how the Fire District operated as an authority. The Fire Chief at that time, Dan Noonan, had more board members he had to answer to every day than we had firefighters that were on duty. And so it was an incredibly inefficient way to operate. In two thousand fourteen, we were successful in going to the voters and asking them to fund the district, to stop having all these other boards of directors that came in and sat on the DFPD or the DFRA board, and to make us whole by making us a Fire District, and that's what happened. However, also at that time, the commercial property owners in Durango, because they pay four times as much for equivalent value in taxes on commercial property, funded a big campaign to to not get that passed. And the first two times the question was asked, that didn't pass. And in coordination with the current City Council at the time, the city attorney at the time, and the Fire Chief and the Fire District Attorney, they came up with a plan where we would eliminate the city from the Fire District and allow the city to contract with us for an equivalent payment amount to what the Fire District constituency paid. And that would allow the City of Durango to continue paying for the fire protection through the general fund instead of individual tax bills being sent to each one of your property owners within the city. And that was palatable and passed.
Except that's not the case, because not about half of it's paid through property taxes, and the other half is paid through the general fund. So our residents are still paying property taxes in order to fund the Fire District.
They are indeed, and it's it's a good point that you make. All of that's funneled through the city, though. The property tax is a tax to the city, not.
And it comes to us, but then we pay it back to you. So it's it's.
But the reason why I think it's a good point that you make is because what that does is provides an opportunity that the voters in the city could choose to vote to to join the Fire District and gain that representative opportunity to both serve on the board and to vote in Fire District elections by just picking up the other half of the mills that it takes. Our current mill rate is eight-point-two mills, and they're already paying five mills in property tax toward fire protection. So they would only need to increase by three-point-two mills in order to rejoin the Fire District. That would do away with the need for us to have a service contract between each other, and it would give the constituents of the City of Durango the opportunity to both serve on our board by running for board positions and also to vote in Fire District elections, giving them direct access to representative government, which they should have.
Yeah, I agree. I think it was a shame that that contract was developed that way without representation. It's total taxation without representation. And so that's that's very frustrating for me, and I know that it it's frustrating for the community.
I'll be on your committee to 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 boost the effort to get that done. It's something that's important that should should happen.
Absolutely.
Any more, any other comments for Chief Doherty? Chief and City Manager and the interim City Attorney, you will be working on a plan of when to bring this back to council?
Yes, Mayor, just as a a point of clarification, it's actually following the the normal process. There are times where we need to go ahead and do the public hearing and the first reading. For example, like the EPC contract, when there's a time, a time, a timeline or a time crunch. So this is just following the normal process. It'll come to the first reading ordinance or introduction of ordinance at the next meeting.
And I dream in at your service. You tell me when to be here, and I'll be here.
I believe that may be in two weeks. Thank you, Chief Doherty.
I just think you guys like seeing me.
Oh, we always do. We always do. Thank you. And then the next item, we'll proceed to quasi judicial hearings, which is a public hearing to consider McDonald's at South Fork Preliminary Development Plan. And that is going to be Mallory St. Pierre. Mallory, did I get your last name correct in the pronunciation? Did I? Okay, thank you.
While they're loading, I just wanted to thank council for allowing me to have all that time because I won't have it in the future, probably. And so I just wanted to get those ideas and thoughts out, and I appreciate that.
No, I think it's very important, and I want to remind folks that the City Council took the lead in being willing to do this because we valued the protection that the Fire District can provide. So we approved those impact fees four years ago, so. But we haven't made a decision on the on the increase.
Evening, Mallory St. Pierre's Community Development. So this is the McDonald's at South Fork Preliminary Development Plan. McDonald's represented, and I believe they're on here virtually if you have questions at the end. By Kimley Horn and Associates have submitted a preliminary plan to construct a new restaurant on Lot Two R A in the South Fork area. The lot is currently vacant with access to be taken from two existing entrances of Zyme Rock Road. The proposed new building is just under five thousand square feet with two converging drive-through lanes. This is the property here highlighted, kind of this half-moon shape. So we are just west of Three Springs on this vacant lot, kind of northeast is the new Maverick. It's just too new to be on here. And then zooming in, you can see Zyme Rock Road that's been constructed. There's an access on either end of the property as well as an existing drainage feature. The planned development is a three-step process conceptual plan followed by preliminary, underlined because that's what we're at now. And then the final, in this case, the South Fork Master Plan serves as both the prelim planned development agreement and conceptual development plan for South Fork. And that plan calls for this area to be regional commercial, which allows for a variety of commercial uses, including restaurants. So this proposal is being reviewed as a preliminary plan, which requires review and approval by Planning Commission and City Council. And the next step, should this be approved, is a staff-level final plan. So this is the site plan. It's a little hard to see, but the the building is here. There, this is one of the entrances. There's parking on either side, some additional parking down here. The other access point here. And the applicants did address a number of major concerns with the submittal. So the the entire building and all the landscaping was moved out of this easement that you can see here. They also added this bypass lane that comes around the drive-through. And there's also pedestrian connection from these parking spaces with a sidewalk connection over to the building so that it doesn't interfere with these drive-through stacking lanes. This is the landscaping plan showing. You can see both the sidewalk that'll be required, structured as part of this down Zyme Rock Road as well as street trees, and then the onsite landscaping. These are the building renderings. There are some modifications still required, but it largely looks like the downtown location, which was reviewed and approved by the Design Review Board that went in. I did know on the support signage has, although included on here, has not been approved at this time, and there is a separate permitting process required for that. So preliminary plans, the middle and review includes a number of factors, including access, parking, and circulation, building location and design, grading and drainage, utilities and public improvements, landscaping, lighting. Staff finds that the proposal generally meets the applicable LUDC and commercial guidelines review criteria. There are some required modifications that will be addressed prior to final plan approval. No public comments regarding this project have been received. Planning Commission heard this request during their February twenty-seventh meeting and recommended approval with the five-zero votes. And with that, the recommendation is to approve the McDonald's at South Fork Preliminary Development Plan with the finding and conditions as outlined in the staff report and discussed at this hearing.
Thank you, Mallory. Has anyone in the audience signed up to speak? First of all, let me open the public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak? And has anyone virtually raised their hand to speak?
Uh, no, Mayor, no one has raised their hand virtually.
And I don't believe, City Clerk, I don't believe there are any names on that list down there on the table. No, you said no. Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and I'll open it up for questions from council. Council, any questions?
I just had one question. Are parking requirements and the EV-ready charging possibilities, does that apply to this development also?
Um, it does not. It doesn't meet the, it's not big enough.
Not big enough to have to have, like, EV-ready parking spots or charging spots?
It does not. So there is a requirement for bicycle parking, but not the.
No charging. I was just wondering if we might ask them if they'd be willing to do that. I know that's one of the big things when people are traveling through is to drop off and eat and charge and move on, so. Thank you.
They should be listening if they want to.
Oh, good.
Any other questions? Any questions for the developers?
Mayor, just to let you know, I I did allow the developer, Jessica McCollum, to speak.
Thank you, Jessica. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you all. Jessica McCollum with Kimley Horn and Associates. We are the civil engineering consultant for McDonald's. In terms of the EV charging, McDonald's was not able to make this call tonight, but that is something that I can ask them after this meeting if they would be interested in pursuing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are you finished with your your comments? Sure, couldn't hear it. Okay. In that, if there's no other questions, is there a motion?
I move to approve the McDonald's at South Fork Preliminary Development Plan with the finding and conditions as outlined in the staff report and discussed at this public hearing.
I'll second. Any discussion? May we have the vote, please?
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Basman?
Yes.
Mayor Pratap Youssef?
Yes. Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mallory, for your presentation.
Thank you.
The next item on our quasi judicial hearings is a public hearing to consider the upstream Preliminary Development Plan at seven sixty East Thirty-first Street. Bryce, please come up. Thank you. Again, we'll have your presentation. We'll open it for public hearing, and then we'll take questions from the council.
Thank you, Mayor Nowsworthy. I am here regarding the proposed upstream Preliminary Development Plan. City staff is requesting approval of the Preliminary Development Plan to create a total of three lots with three single-family homes and two ADUs. And the conceptual development plan was approved by City Council in November of two thousand twenty-two. And the this preliminary development plan was recommended for approval by Planning Commission at their meeting held February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And.
Bryce, would you please mind, I just noticed that a city clerk representative came in. Could we pause just for a moment? I I'm wondering if we have an announcement and if we need to pull out our ties.
The preliminary unofficial first election night report for the City Council election for the City of Durango in the order they are provided by the county clerk, not in order of the most votes. So be able to read those out for us. Douglas Snow received two hundred and twenty-four votes. Gilda Yasi received two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight votes. Dave Woodruff received two thousand one hundred and seventy-seven votes. Harrison Wentz received two thousand one hundred and fifty-one votes. Carter Rogers received five hundred and thirty votes, with a total of seven thousand five hundred and forty votes cast out of thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-six ballots.
And thank you, City Clerk. And can you tell us again, because this is not yet confirmed, what the process will be in the next two weeks?
So there are, there's an eight-day period where the county clerk has to wait for absentee or military voters to get their ballots in. She will confirm that and audit the process and then provide a certified results of the election. I will present that at the, or actually, Ben will present that at the next meeting on the eighteenth.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Have help putting on my bow tie. I want to recognize the staff's effort to get us in the spirit of the election. Thank you for that announcement. And can we now then proceed again, Bryce, with your presentation? And thank you for letting us pause.
Of course. Of course. Yes. So between the conceptual and the preliminary development plans, staff had reviewed more detailed drainage and utilities plans. And Parks and Recreation is currently exploring the opportunity for a trail easement through the southeast corner of the property where there's currently a social trail. We had a site visit last week and we're currently working through the easement agreement language, which would be settled in the final review stage, which is done by staff if this were to be approved tonight. This is a contextual map of the area. You can see the property highlighted in red. And to the north, you will see East 32nd Street. And then to the south, it's kind of hard to see with the captions here, but this is River View Elementary to the south here, just to give you an idea of where we are. And this is a zoomed in version of the site aerial. You can see there is a significant portion of this parcel that has yet to be developed. And this is where the proposed structures will be located. The applicant upstream development LLC is represented by P S D Engineering, and they propose to subdivide, rezone and create a planned development on the property addressed at 760 East 31st Street. The property is 1.7 acres with one single-family home and an A D U currently located onsite. And the property is on the northwestern part of the cul-de-sac at the end of East 31st Street. The subdivision proposal is required, or required the property to be zoned as a planned development. As the zoning standards for the established neighborhood 5C would require more street frontage than is possible for a property located off of a cul-de-sac. And two single, new single-family homes and one A D U are proposed for the site, which will result in a total of three single-family homes and two A D Us within the planned development. And short-term rentals will not be allowed within this planned development. This is a site plan. You can see the existing A D U just off of the cul-de-sac here where my mouse cursor is. In the existing single-family home, there is a, what will be a private shared driveway that comes from the cul-de-sac down to the first building footprint you can see here. The second building footprint here represents the second single-family home proposed, and then that is also partnered with a second A D U for this planned development. The proposed project is supported by the strategic plan goal of affordability and economic opportunity. It will create housing opportunities to support a multi-generational and mixed income community workforce and increase affordability to bridge the disparity between income and home and rental prices. The proposal is also supported by the comprehensive plan and housing plan. And following in a holistic review of the comprehensive plan, staff is willing to support the project given the following. That the road design meets the standards of emergency service providers. The proposed density is in alignment with the residential low-density requirement for this lot illustrated in the 2017 comprehensive plan. And the project will result in additional infill housing development for the city. And as far as the housing plan is supported by the following policies. To encourage residential development in areas where necessary, public facilities and services can be provided economically and efficiently. To incentivize the construction of smaller units. And the policy goal of to permit the development of 54 accessory dwelling apartments on parcels that are large enough to compatibly accommodate the structures and required parking. The following review criteria was used as part of this project and this process. The access off of the cul-de-sac for the property, the required parking for the proposed structures. The overall site planning, the location and design of the proposed structures. Grading and drainage that may be affected by the development for the lot. The utilities required to supply the buildings with their power sewer and water, as well as the landscaping. And the proposed plan meets all the applicable criteria of the L U D C. No written comments have been provided for this preliminary development plan, and you can see the motion here on the screen. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Noseworthy.
Thank you, Bryce. I don't see any signatures on for anyone in the chambers to speak. Has anyone raised their hand virtually to speak? At, first of all, let me open the public hearing and see if anyone has raised their hand to speak virtually.
No mayor, it doesn't appear that anyone has indicated they'd like to speak.
Then I will close the, oh, sorry, please. You'll need to sign up. And and then I'll call your name up so we have it for the record. Thank you.
My name is Bob Bernard.
Bernard.
We make certain that that goes to the, you're welcome to speak.
You'll have a three-minute timeframe, and I want to make certain that that gets to the clerk.
My name is Bob Bernard and I'm next door to the proposed development. And my major concern, seeing the layout, is parking. We have some neighbors that have rental properties. I'm sure there's no plan for this to be a rental property. But we have a rental property, for example, across the street that typically has five or six cars parking for one home. So that eats up a lot of the parking in our area. And I noticed there's not a lot of room for vehicle space that I see on that layout. I'm a little concerned about that because they do not have access to the alley. Their property just does not touch the alleyway there. And so egress is in and out of just the one cul-de-sac entrance. So just wanted to express my concern about that.
Thank you. And let me also say thank you for waiting through this entire meeting to speak on this topic.
It was an interesting process. I'm glad I did. Thank you.
I will then close the public hearing and offer any questions from council and if you also, Bryce, might be able to address the topic the gentleman raised.
Absolutely. I can do that first if you like.
Please do.
Okay. So this project, it does actually exceed the required parking that would normally be required for an additional two single-family homes and an A D U. So that is one of the reasons that staff has felt comfortable moving forward with the recommended approval for this project.
Questions from council? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the, sorry, of the, oh my gosh, that's weirded, weirded, worded weird. I make a motion to approve the upstream minor subdivision rezone and preliminary plan development plan with findings that the project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan and applicable L U D C criteria subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
I'll second.
I was not smart enough to fix that in my head. I'm so sorry.
Is there any, any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Bryce. Okay. We will move on to introduction of ordinances. And interim city attorney, Mr. Tuttil. We have an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm going to have you provide information related to that ordinance.
This is the ordinance that was previously discussed at the public hearing under item 12.1.1. And this would be ordinance number 2023-09. Authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement and other documents related there to and connection to the completion of energy performance improvements for the city of Durango facilities.
Any questions of the interim city attorney? Is there a motion? It's 202309.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-09.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make my point here and explain why I will not support this motion. We are discussing the financing of a $7 million project, which half goes to consultants. And about half is direct construction cost at 3.36 million. And in my opinion, that number will be lower, as I will explain later during this agenda. The, the cost, the total cost, including financing cost, was discussed earlier during this meeting. And it would be about 9.1 million with a 4% interest rate. Reportedly, the alternative options for financing were considered, but it seemed the needed 5.4 million, which is the amount that would be financed is not available, which is confusing to me as we have over 80 million in total fund balance. And I agree, there are restrictions. And it is my understanding that the average return on the investments with those funds that are available for are less than the interest rates that we would be paying to finance this. The water fund alone probably has 17 million in cash. So it seems those projects that are water-related can be paid for directly with even financing anything. The charter, second point, and the charter has language on community involvement when taking on debt. However, it seems this is not applicable since it's structured, since it is structured as a long-term lease financing model, even though our community will have to shoulder that long-term financial burden for a long time. I find it highly unlikely we would no longer pay and teleconsult the owner of the lease to take back their solar panels or HVAC system. And lastly, going the route with a long-term purchase agreement will result in costs, additional costs to set the structure up. It will cause ongoing fees. It will somewhat complicate city finances, which are, in my opinion, already overly complex, unnecessarily overly complex with these long-term lease payments. And all of that is unnecessary, in my opinion. So I will not support the lease purchase agreement to finance any of the energy, energy improvement projects. And instead, I would recommend council to direct staff to look into the money available in the various funds. Which funds that we, that can be used for certain purposes, such as the waterfront for water, water, the solar project at the water treatment plant and water consumption improvements such as low flow faucets. That's my comment and the reason why I will not support that motion.
Any other discussion from council? May we have the vote, please?
Mayor Pratim Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Nope.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is item 15.1, discussion and possible action concerning the adverse ruling from the district court. I will turn it over to the interim city attorney Bill Tuttil for explanation and opening.
Thank you, mayor. This is a seeking the city council's input on whether or not to appeal the decision of the district court, which required the city to turn over a preliminary audit from the outside auditors. And our deadline to appeal is coming up before your next meeting. We previously had executive session in which we discussed legal issues related to this. And if the city council would like to proceed with an appeal, which comes at the risk of paying the request source attorney's fees if we lose. On the other hand, if we prevail, we won't have to pay their attorney's fees to date, which we're currently under an order to do. And we think there's adequate basis for an appeal, but there's certainly no guarantee of the outcome. And we're seeking the city council's guidance with a recommendation based upon our prior discussions that an appeal is viable. And if you seek to authorize it, we'll proceed in that regard using our outside counsel at this moment, who is Nick Poppy of Nathan Bremer.
Interim city attorney, will that require a vote tonight?
Yes, it will.
All right. Questions of the interim city?
It could be by motion.
By motion.
But yes, we're seeking.
But you put in there possible action. Questions of the interim city attorney? If there are no questions, is there a motion?
I would move that we direct the interim city attorney to proceed with appealing the ruling of the district court in case number 22 C V 30112.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I will make my point and explain why I will vote against that motion. This is concerning a lawsuit against the city to make draft 2021 financial reports available for review. When this lawsuit was filed, the majority of council voted to not disclose the financial documents, and I was the only one in favor of disclosing them. Most people in our community and potential our counselors may not be aware that I had requested the city manager to provide the 2021 financial reports before they were available. And even the year before, I had requested the draft 2020 financial reports. And I was not provided with the draft ones, only the final audited ones that were provided in October 2021. Why is this important to me to have such financial reports in a timely manner, even if it's in a draft form? The financial, the annual financial report provide a clear picture in accordance with formal accounting standards of the revenues and expenses as well as the assets and liabilities. They also go through an auditing process by an external party, which ensures third-party involvement and review by experts in their field. These financial reports are typically due by, I believe it is July following year, but I have to check on that. But either way, in that period, it helps with the budgeting and forecasting that starts later in the year versus having the financial, the final financial reports when we're in the middle of the budgeting cycle and being too late. And that might be even a charter requirement to have the finance, the financial reports available before the budget cycle starts. But I'll need to check into that. And of course, one can make the argument that draft or work documents cannot be relied upon, and that makes sense. But it can be addressed by simply labeling them as draft work documents that cannot be relied upon until finalized and completed by the external auditor. And even as a draft or work document provided in July, when the, where I assume the auditor is working through their final review and adding auditor opinions and statements. The information showing the financial condition of the city and all the various funds is very valuable to me at least. So a lawsuit was filed and we had an adverse ruling. Not sure if we can expose the cost. But, and now we are willing to spend even more money to appeal this ruling. Potential another double-digit number of thousands of dollars for legal staff, and if we lose it for the other party's legal fees. I do not support an appeal, and I think this whole matter should have been prevented in the first place. And as such, I will vote no.
Thank you. Can we, does any other counselor wish to speak during discussion? I will add that we received advice from our in-house legal advice team and external and proceeded to follow that advice. This is a, the recommendation to us is this is a working document. And we need the opportunity to revise and work through that in an appropriate manner. I believe that we have followed our council. And that is why I will be supporting this vote. I will now end discussion and call for the, the vote.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
No.
Mayor Pratim Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes, thank you.
And mayor, if I may interrupt, we do have some updated results from the election. They are still working on these votes, but we have currently 8,351 votes in. Gilda Yasi is leading with 2,714 votes. Gillian is leading with 2,714 votes. Dave Woodruff is currently in second place with 2,405. Harrison Wentz is closely right behind him, 2,399 votes. Douglas, Tiffany Carter Rogers with 585, and Douglas Snow at 248. There is a note on the county from the clerk and recorder that says there will be a mandatory recount because of how close the races.
Thank you, thank you. Let us move to item 15.2, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt a Resolution Establishing the Financial Advisory Board. And this is going to be a team presentation. And Thierry, Sarah, Allison, and Aaron. And if I may just for a minute, I'm just going to get a little bit more water while you're pulling that up. Thank you. We will, we will take a two, we will take a two-minute break. No, no, we'll take a two-minute break. I do want to see council back in in short order. Thank you.
So the question is, does the recount apply to and if the count are wrong? Well, and I think the overseas thing is like eight or 10 days. But then I don't know as far as the recount. And so as you just talked to Tiffany, the care process will go to April 12th, and will involve a mandatory recount, as global it is with. So the recount after 12. Because you. I don't have to do all the signature verse, all that stuff again, because I've already verified. Right, but that's April 12th, and the councilman is.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Needed a nourishment break. Erin, take it away.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council, Erin Hyder, Assistant City Manager. Tonight, several team members of the interdepartmental team established to work on the council-directed Boards and Commission reorganization project will be presenting more detailed information specific to the Financial Advisory Board for council discussion. As mentioned in previous discussions, this has truly been an all-hands project, focused on how to best meet council project goals, maintaining the importance of community involvement in the decision-making process, and incorporating feedback that we've heard throughout the process. Before we jump into a detailed Financial Advisory Board or FAB discussion, we wanted to provide a quick recap of both the Boards and Commission project overview and our Community Engagement Strategy Framework from our earlier study session item today as it directly interplays with the FAB discussion. So recap once again to give a little overview of how the Boards and Commission project started and several considerations that staff had in mind while working through this project. So council's direction was, if staff was going to reimagine Boards of Commissions from scratch, what would that look like? Council asked staff to be bold and visionary in this consideration. We are working, we considered how do we ensure that we increase and diversify the feedback that council receives to represent the entire community? To reduce administrative steps and decision-making process and establish more clarity for the public related to the sequence of events related to projects? And how to address redundancies within the Boards and Commissions and ensure the Boards of Commissions aren't competing against each other, but instead have a unified or holistic citywide approach? This slide here provides a quick recap of the project timeline. After several years of discussion, in February 2022, council reinitiated the Boards of Reorganization at the retreat. In July of 2022, staff hosted initial discussions with council regarding initial ideas of what it could look like. At that point in time, council requested that staff reach out to the individual Boards of Commissions, share the initial idea, and gather feedback for consideration. In October 2022, staff presented a draft of structure alternatives. And recently, in February of 2023, staff presented a proposed Boards and Commission structure along with the resulting opportunity to re-envision our overall community engagement strategy. At that meeting, council gave direction to continue moving forward with implementing the Boards and Commission proposal. Just a quick reference from our earlier study session presentation. This grid outlines the spectrum of public participation as identified by the International Association of Public Participation. This is a foundational anchor of the framework of the Community Engagement Strategy, guiding us to identifying varying levels of engagement and what they look like, anywhere from inform to collaborate and empower. And not all projects require the same level of engagement, and some projects will require several level, different types of engagement. The re-envisioned Community Engagement Framework presented earlier today is a project that spurred from the initial Boards of Commission project and outlined several components and levels of engagement to enhance our overall engagement with the community. This strategy optimizes the voice of the community by expanding opportunity for input, diversify the voices solicited, and will promote increased public engagement opportunities. We are confident that we're not proposing a decrease in public engagement, but do acknowledge it may feel or look different to some votes than previously experienced. There are three key elements of the engagement framework, including inform, engage, and participate. The city's Boards and Commissions continue to be a critical component of the expanded community engagement framework. Within this, we do believe there's an opportunity for council to clarify and recalibrate with the Boards of Commissions to ensure that they are best supporting council's goals within their role expectations. Following council's direction at our February 7th discussion, here is the Boards and Commission structure moving forward. And the remainder of tonight's presentation for your discussion is focused on the Financial Advisory Board. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Torey Nycom to present the overview of the FAB.
Thank you, Erin. Torey Nycom, Parks and Recreation Director, also the staff liaison to the Natural Lands Preservation and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Boards. Now that Erin's now that Erin's provided us with a good synopsis of the community engagements process, we hope to really describe to city council the operating strategy for the Financial Advisory Board. Please note that this is one element of the overall community engagement strategy and projects that come to and then get recommended from. The Financial Advisory Board will use other engagement strategies such as working teams, public meetings, engage, and reach Durango, et cetera. The nice thing about this strategy is that all projects are inherently different, and the engagement strategy can then be customized to fit that need of that project. I'm going to go through and really kind of talk about the purpose of the Financial Advisory Board. The Financial Advisory Board is designed to be a community-based, cross-functional, and even cross-departmental board, touching a variety of boards throughout the city, or a variety of departments throughout the city that have capital improvement projects. It will have a defined responsibility to serve as an advisory board to city council to review and then provide a recommendation on all CIPs in the city of Durango, with the exception of the library and the airport as their joint ventures with other partner agencies. A lot of this would be done through the CIP budgeting process that will be explained in just a little bit. We hope that this will provide a unified approach to provide an annual recommendation to CIP, to city council on a five-year CIP plan. So instead of getting one, instead of getting multiple recommendations from multiple boards, you would get one recommendation from the Financial Advisory Board. In addition to the CIP recommendations, the Financial Advisory Board responsibility will also include review of other financial decisions as requested, such as a water aid study. And that's in a nutshell, the purpose of the Financial Advisory Board. Membership of the Financial Advisory Board is based on qualifications in other than you would have a Parks and Recreation representative, a multimodal representative. We're going more in a qualifications-based on process. Those persons would be asked to have expertise or experience with either finance, budgeting, and strategic plan development, or capital project development and maintenance. A second layer of qualifications for the board membership will be asking that they have experience, not only in the above-mentioned things, but also in the following areas. It could be your Parks and Recreation, multimodal, streets and roads, utilities, and roadway infrastructure. The Financial Advisory Board is recommended right now to be housed within the Finance Department. However, because the directors and support staff from the department's proposing CIPs mostly, namely the Transportation Department, Public Works, and Parks and Rec Departments, provide topic area expertise. Their support and coordination will provide support materials for board meetings as well. Staff has a technical and working knowledge of the projects along with the ability to reach out to other professionals in their industries to apply best practices. We're also recommending that, because there is financial recommendations on the five-year CIP plan, that will go to city council, but council liaison would not be on this board. General process and procedures of the Financial Advisory Board. Like current Boards and Commissions, public participation will be encouraged and taken at all meetings. This will be a touch point where community members can comment on CIP projects and recommend additional projects they see benefiting the community. The overall annual workflow for the Financial Advisory Board is envisioned to follow the city's budgeting flow. It's anticipated that there will be heavy discussion in the spring and summer months around CIPs, and a recommendation would be provided to city council at the July or August, or within that timeframe, July or August. The remaining months anticipate reviewing and update, giving the Financial Advisory Board review and updates of CIPs, as well as information sharing on potential new CIPs that maybe that city staff or council gets from the community and the like. So that's kind of the qualifications, the process of the board in a nutshell. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, who's going to talk a little bit more about the CIP development process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Torey. I'm Sarah Hill, Transportation Director, and I'm the council liaison to the Multimodal Advisory Board. I'm going to briefly cover the proposed changes to the CIP budgeting process and the proposed public participation process with FAB. It's a lot of P's.
Sarah, you did mean staff liaison.
Did I say council?
No problem.
We messed that up a couple of times already.
Don't worry.
So for the benefit of anybody who's listening in who may not be aware, a capital improvement project or CIP is defined as a permanent addition to the city's assets worth $50,000 or more and with a useful life of more than three years. So the 2005, 2015, and the 2019 sales taxes were each passed by the voters for specific CIP programs, and each of their ballot languages require that a citizen advisory board make recommendations on their expenditures. Currently, we have four advisory boards established to make recommendations on the three taxes. Multimodal and Parks and Rec Advisory Boards make joint recommendations on the 2015 half cent. The Parks and Rec and Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Boards make joint recommendations for the 2005, and then the Infrastructure Advisory Board makes recommendations for the 2019. One benefit of establishing the Financial Advisory Board is that it does provide a holistic perspective of CIP projects and our available funding. And that's versus having four individual boards providing recommendations from potentially siloed perspectives, sometimes competing with one another, which is an issue that we did run into in the last budgeting process. If you remember, there were competing recommendations from two different advisory boards. So I'm going to quickly walk through the current CIP budget process here, which is the flow chart on the left. I know that's really hard to see. But we have it's showing the current process specifically for the 2005 and 2015 sales taxes. And it's important to note that as an additional level of complexity, there's a concurrent process happening in the Infrastructure Advisory Board at the same time that this is happening to identify their priorities for the 2019 funding. So for the current 2005 and 2015 CIP process, each board needs individually to prioritize their projects. A subcommittee of chairs and vice-chairs of each board is formed to evaluate those recommendations jointly. That conversation, those recommendations, go back to staff to develop the budget and back to the individual boards to make recommendations at their monthly meetings. The subcommittee then has an opportunity to meet again to review the budget and get information about the other boards' priority projects, goes back to the full boards once again for a final individual recommendation. If those recommendations do not agree, there's an opportunity for a joint board meeting among all the members of all the boards. And last year, throughout this whole process, you know, like we said, there was not a joint recommendation made. Council received two different recommendations. In an average year across the four citizen advisory boards, there are 16 meetings in a five-month timeframe, and that's inclusive of the Infrastructure Advisory Board's process as well. So the process can be repetitive and time-intensive to participate in, not only for our volunteer board members and for staff, but also importantly for the members of the community who are wishing to advocate for a project. If a community member has a project that overlaps a funding source or a priority, they do have to attend several meetings and follow this confusing process throughout the life of the budget conversation of their project. So one of the council's goals that we heard was to make citizen engagement easier and more direct to participate in. And streamlining the CIP budgeting process through one board does increase the efficiency and transparency of the annual budgeting process. So now I'm going to step through the proposed process, which is So now I'm going to step through the proposed process, which is outlined on the right side of the slide here. In this recommendation, staff would kick off the budget process in April with a presentation of CIP priorities that are comprised of the five-year CIP program. Any new priorities that have emerged through our ongoing community engagement strategy throughout the year. And then in addition to a number of other participation avenues, Fab will host an annual public CIP priority forum to provide a meaningful opportunity for the community to weigh in on the CIP budget process directly. So that takes us through the first two steps. And the third step, based on the feedback received from the public forum and any recommendations from Fab, staff will present the CIP budgets for our entire CIP program with the exception of the airport and library. And then Fab will have an opportunity for additional discussion before making their budget recommendation to council. So again, there'll be one CIP budget recommendation to city council for consideration from the Fab, who have had the opportunity to holistically review these proposed projects, funding availability, and to get meaningful feedback from the community beyond staff. And we're confident that it does enhance and optimize the feedback opportunity providing clear and direct opportunity for public participation. We have heard the community's concerns about the importance of maintaining an opportunity for public participation. And we want to be very clear that public participation is and will remain a cornerstone of the CIP budget process. As Erin mentioned earlier, we are confident that this proposal improves our opportunities to participate. So for the CIP budget process specifically, I'm going to just walk through how residents can identify and advocate for important CIP projects. The currently public participation process is inconsistent across departments and across advisory boards. Board meetings run the risk of being used in lieu of a more robust and diverse citizen engagement strategy for the sake of time and resources and capacity. So though what we see happening is that we are hearing from small groups of board members on each project, instead of being able to engage a more diverse community and including other important stakeholders. As we saw on the previous slide, this process can be repetitive and confusing to follow for people. The current process kind of looks like this. Someone may contact staff or council to advocate for an identified need. We can use an example of a safe pedestrian crossing between the Animus River Trail and downtown across Camino del Rio. Staff would encourage that person to attend the appropriate advisory board meeting. And in this example, they would have to attend both Parks and Rec and Multimodal Advisory Board meetings because of the pervium overlap of the Animus River Trail and the multimodal facility. If those boards decide to make a recommendation to move the project forward for funding, the project would become a part of the CIP budget process and follow that confusing flow chart that we saw. If the if the project makes it through that process and is budgeted by city council, that initiates the project-specific public process that allows a community to weigh in on each project several times throughout its design and construction phase. So at this point, staff is planning for and hosting several public meetings, stakeholder meetings, and advisory board meetings. As the enhanced community engagement strategy outlined in the earlier, council's direction is for more meaningful, diverse opportunity for the community to weigh in. Rather than relying on what can be a siloed perspective of individual board members. So the design and construction phases of the project often last beyond advisory board members' terms as well. And it's not uncommon that later in the design of the project, turnover on boards can result in reeducation of the history of the project, project delays, costly revisions, and sometimes even a loss of funding priority. There's a potential for a very confusing process to follow for the community. And again, less diverse and less meaningful opportunity for citizen engagement throughout the life of the project. So how can a community member identify the need for a CIP under the Financial Advisory Board proposal? The primary ways are in the top box. Provide public comment at any of the monthly Fab meetings throughout the year, which is similar to our current advisory board process, but with the added benefit that the communication is direct and streamlined, doesn't have to be reported or repeated and followed towards multiple different boards based on the funding source. And then secondly, Fab will be hosting more robust annual CIP priority forum, which is will be an opportunity for prioritization and budgeting of each year's budget. And then, as you all have seen earlier in the study session, there are multiple opportunities and a variety of avenues to provide feedback and engage in the CIP process throughout the year. Those are to volunteer for project-specific working groups, contact staff, contact council, participate and engage Durango online and at our bimonthly forums, and see click fix. Staff is planning to track and consolidate all of the comments and feedbacks that feedback that we receive through these multiple avenues and report back out to the community what we're hearing at our bimonthly forums and also as information staff reports to the Financial Advisory Board monthly. And I am handing it over to Allison Baker to talk about implementation timeline.
Good evening. I'm Allison Baker. I'm the Public Works Director. And I'm the staff liaison for Infrastructure Advisory Board. So after the information that we've gotten on how Fab would be set up and how it impacts particularly the the CIP process, which I did want to add does include the utility projects, facilities, any other capital improvement projects that are going through council every year as part of the budget. That is the intent that we're proposing here. So the implementation timeline. I wanted to start with sort of the endpoint in terms of
discussion of why why we're looking at an implementation timeline that is this specific.
The selection of board members for empty seats is currently scheduled for the mid-May of 2023, which is coming up quickly. And from there, we're backing into the potential of a proposed Fab resolution that we'll offer tonight to council to review. The other driving factor is that we're coming up fast and furious on CIP approach to excuse me, I'm enjoying your hat. The we're coming up on our CIP budget season and that puts puts a time time sensitivity on creating a financial advisory board if we're headed in that direction so that we can begin the process and go through the iterations that were described as part of the process. Back to the beginning, April 4th, tonight, I'll share a proposed Fab resolution. Tomorrow, if that passes tomorrow, advertising for boards and commissions, including Fab, would be initiated. On April 30th, the recruiting for new position applicants closes. The May 1 through 14, council interview teams will provide interviews of the candidates and make selections, which would provide the opportunity at the end of May to have a first meeting and orientation of the Financial Advisory Board. A little bit of information of how we'd envision that orientation would be to explain our department structures and how how we interact related to CIP projects. Because it's not immediately obvious if you haven't been involved with that. Explaining the structure of the various sales tax fundings, the enterprise project funds that are associated with water, sewer, and trash recycle. We would provide the 2023 five-year CIP plans, explain what those are, and work to set set a schedule with or have fabs set a schedule for review process of the 2024 CIP review that would lead to a recommendation to council for CIP funding. So this, I'll just breeze past right now. It was the proposed council motion, but let me leave a little time here for questions. If council members have any questions for the the team that's been working on this, we're happy to to jump in and offer suggestions or comment. If you want to guide us, we are happy to provide information that will help that. We're wide open.
Thank you, Allison. Yeah, so when we get to it.
Yep.
Thank you. I would like to ask that all four of you remain there, available for questions and to answer them. And I also want to note to those that both Allison, Tori, and Sarah, in their role have in the past, in the current structure, are the staff liaison to the various boards that provide the direction over the tax-directed funding. So I want to make that clear. I will open it up to questions. I will also moderate to make certain that questions that we have equitable opportunity among all council to ask questions. So I will interject if necessary. I will now open it up to questions of staff, including Erin.
I have a question, not specifically about the implementation, but the Infrastructure Advisory Board, I realize that the responsibility for the 2019 dedicated sales tax was given to them because they work in other areas that streets are affected by water and sewer. But what was, does anyone know what the original genesis and the purpose was of the Utilities Board that was working with water and sewer?
I can give a general explanation. Tom, do you have that list of the original resolutions? Or is that not immediately available setting up the the boards initially? Could you, could you look while I give sort of the colloquial version? And if it's not immediately available, we can get that with the his, but basically there's a history.
Also, excuse me, the interim city attorney might also have that information available. So I'm going to, I'm signaling to him to also be looking for that.
Thank you. Prior to being the Infrastructure Advisory Board, up until 2019, the the Utilities Commission was the the board in existence to guide the enterprise funds related to utilities. Prior to that, there, and I don't know the exact date, that's where I would need support, is there was a water commission that specifically focused on water rights and the water utility in earlier times. And that's, I apologize, I have limited expense. This was well before I was involved. You might ask me. So I'll I'll let that, I'll look for future information from them.
What? So the reason why I'm asking, basically, is because we, I don't know what that resolution says about it and whether or not it could actually be absorbed into this process or not.
The, you're, you're asking about the utilities function of the, yes. We did review the earlier resolution documents to ensure that there was no conflict. We checked the ballot language.
There wasn't, there was no ballot, though.
No, not with the utilities, but with the sales tax. We checked each of those to ensure that they were.
I understand with the ballot language.
Okay.
That's clear to me.
Got it.
What I'm not clear about is the commission, the Utilities Commission itself, before the prior.
And it was dissolved in the process of becoming, the Utilities Commission became the Infrastructure Advisory Board.
And, okay, so, but they were tasked with the 2019 and also with water and sewer?
They were, yes. And that responsibility would carry forward.
Into the Fab.
Yes.
Okay, great. That answers my question. Thank you.
May, may I also, as a current liaison, just councillor Baxter, say that this, the members of this board, while many of them have expertise in water, they recognize they have no expertise in streets and alleys, in pavement issues. And they've even been asked to consider stormwater management, which is out of their field of expertise. So could you elaborate on the the idea of the working groups and how those might be created and being able to come together on topic-specific issues to help inform the Fab?
I think Erin had a better description of the the process where we would open up.
Who's the appropriate person on the team?
I don't want to skew us off into the wrong direction.
Yeah, I, I am happy to give an example, a similar example as to what we discussed earlier at the study session.
Any example that might help inform the FAV?
Okay.
Group example.
Yeah, for sure. So.
Or how we put them together. I'll, I'll give you an example, such as there's a an HOA or subdivision who's recently come to staff to to ask about maybe adding some pickleball courts within their community. So if something came to us like that, we might consider creating that working group to study that that proposal from that subdivision and then be able to to bet it and and look at that proposal. Maybe even from a financial, how much will it cost coming up with some of those numbers? So we could pull a working group together for that, then take it to Fab, and then that that project could potentially then go on to the CIP list to go through the whole annual process of being prioritized and then potentially recommended.
Thank you, Tori, because I was asked, Sarah, to provide, could you provide an example of how from your experience of working with the Multimodal Advisory Board, a working group might be formed to inform the Financial Advisory Board?
Yeah, something that just comes top of mind would be like our current, we're currently updating our multimodal transportation plan. And it may be a great opportunity to set up a group of people who have passion, interest, and maybe even some experience to kind of help guide through that process and and serve as additional resources to staff and consultants as we're going through that.
And I can offer a couple of examples. I thought you were talking about how the group would be made up. I think a rate study is a great example of where a working group would be a great support. Moving more toward the streets, funding the sidewalk districts that we've discussed and some of the the stormwater drainage planning and how we prioritize the CIP projects associated with that, going into it as an initial setup that we have not had in at least a decade in the city.
Thank you.
I was also wondering, we had some issues that have gone so long. For example, let's say e-bikes, right? It took years and years and years for us to like get it through. Do you envision this process being able to like focus a select group of people who had to go to natural lands, I had to go to Parks and Rec, like a select working group specific to e-bikes? And just FYI, you just brought up pickleball in that community. You know, your like email's going to be blowing up. What are you doing? Come on. No, I'm just kidding. But, yeah.
Actually, the e-bike discussion probably would not land on the Financial Advisory Board's desk. It would probably be more in the the community engagement realm. And that would be a great example of us being able to go out there and and find maybe experts in the field that are local. Maybe we reach out to car out of Parks and Wildlife, hiking groups, Durango Trails. Those people who are out on the the trail system and can be potentially impacted by e-bikes. So we could pull that kind of working group together, which would have a broad, diverse breadth of of knowledge to help inform us and and talk through the 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 issues and things like that. So, yes.
And in like, oh, wrong one, sorry. And in theory, that would take a lot less time than it did to get through to the conclusion that you did.
Yeah, in theory, it could, for sure.
I mean, obviously, we don't know until we try.
Yep. Yes, so we have gone through a couple iterations of e-bike discussions, starting, you know, I think back in 2018. So we could hopefully just go through this one discussion, identify all the issues, come up with a recommendation, and move forward in relatively short order.
So I do, I have a couple of questions. I can, can I jump in? Okay, great. Um, you say no council liaison on the Fab board, which I'm not disagreeing or saying, I kind of want to know a little bit why, if you think a rotating council liaison might, so not one councillor is always there. And if not, I find it super helpful to get like monthly updates from my colleagues about Parks and Rec. And so would a staff member that's on there be providing that? So any, just a few questions on that specific topic?
We, because there, this is going to be a financial recommendation to city council. We did not feel it would be appropriate to have one councillor on that board throughout the year going through these discussions and potentially influencing, influencing those discussions, not that that would happen. But if you wanted to create a rotating schedule where a councillor could sit in, I mean, we're open to, to any sort of those recommendations and suggestions.
From the boards and commissions I sit on, they just really appreciate that. Being able to have that dialogue if they need some sort of outlet to counsel. And so it's just, it's feedback I've gotten.
In addition, if a councillor is not on the board, then staff would be happy to, to provide that update.
Your schedule for the fab board says April through July. Do you envision in August, September, October, November, December, like all the rest of the months? That there's a need for, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming there would be a need year long for this.
Yeah, we're, we're anticipating monthly meetings, yeah, regularly scheduled monthly meetings. The, the fall and the winter months, I have no doubt that we'll be giving project updates. We'll be getting input from the community, potential new projects that we could be discussing at fab. There could be additional studies on fees and, and water rates, for example, things like that. So I think there'll be more than enough topics to be discussed throughout the year.
Okay, a couple of things, and then I do have one more question that I want to, probably I'm going to say a couple of things real quick. Just because we've had so much public comment on this, which I love, knowing like what people are passionate about. It also kind of triggered that some boards and commissions were not as in the know as some others. I just talked to Jasper and he was like, oh, I did not realize some boards and commissions just found out. Like, because I served on Salt Fab and they've known for a year that we've been talking about this. And Salt Fab and I have been kind of discussing different like options for them and what, you know, as we were kind of going through it. And so I think that that was, it's, that council role is sometimes kind of good if, you know, or staff, just making sure everyone's staying informed. I do want to say it was so, and, and public comment was all brought up about the money, 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 money. That's, it's not about, just about the money. And I think that got skewed by some articles written and stuff. We council originally put this on the agenda. So when we did the strategic plan in 2022, it was a big push of ours to have more community engagement and better community engagement. And that, and then like reaching out to like informing our community better through, you know, social media and, you know, news releases and all that stuff. So those were the things put in the strategic plan that weren't before. And so on that, we, we talked about boards and commissions and how we didn't have great community engagement and a diverse community engagement through it. And so this actually got brought up to increase in community engagement. And so I hope that everyone that is like listening and is passionate about that listens to the study session. Because I was blown away by Erin and Scott's presentation and about the potential of the increase and more diverse community engagement than we have now, where we can actually factor in, you know, so many different aspects and people in our community that we don't hear their voices now. And so I was impressed by that. I want, I want to make sure people know everyone's likes also saying like, you're getting rid of boards and commissions. In this new proposal, we have 15 boards and commissions. So we're not getting rid of boards and commissions. We love our boards and commissions. We will continue to serve on our boards as liaisons. I do think that there is some things we can do to potentially make this change is hard for everybody, right? It's going to be hard for community, it's going to be hard for staff. But I think that in the end, this could be a really great change. And I think if it works and council is part of that engaged Durango piece and those community meetings and people that are involved in the community don't just want to be involved on like a Parks and Rec board. They want to come and, and be involved in, you know, things that are going on. And it'll involve Parks and Rec, it'll involve infrastructure advisor, like it'll involve all that. And so, but my concern is the transition through all this. Like the timeline you set up sounds great for the financial advisory board. But I don't think, like, I feel like there's some boards that could probably transition real quick in May. And, and like I just think of, for example, I just did the C E C retreat for the Creative Economy Commission. And we literally put in a plan in place and we know what we need in terms of groups. What did you call those? Working groups, thank you, sorry. In terms of working groups, like we already have a plan, like this is the working groups we need at this time of year, like we got it. And so I feel like other boards and commissions, it's going to be a little bit longer of a process. And they might not know right away. And so I would want like a more detailed description of that transition. And maybe some boards and commissions, it might take six months for fab to get up to speed with what's going on. And some it might take a couple of weeks, you know? And so I just would, I think I would advocate for that a little bit. And then a creative way to make sure council is involved as well and we're like the point. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council?
Kind of to what your point about what you just spoke to as far as transition. That's what I brought up in the study session. And one of my concerns is that I love the vision that's been presented about earlier today during our study session about how the public engagement works and how staff works with the public and how those things get brought forward and how they get addressed. And I appreciate also the financial advisory board's role in managing the dedicated sales tax conversations as well as the C I P dollars. But that system is not in place yet. And if we're talking about May 1st, that's the end of this month. And so I'm concerned with that transition to your point. And I like what you said about the C E C getting together and saying, here's the kind of things as far as working groups are concerned that we would like to see the city consider. And I'm just wondering particularly around the infrastructure advisory board and around the 2015 and 2005 dedicated sales taxes. So the natural lands board, the multimodal board, and the parks and rec board. If it wouldn't be a good idea to bring them together and then to have that conversation with them as a whole, because that's what you're trying to do, is bring those that, what they see as challenges and what they see might be helpful together and make that happen. So in the transition, I think you would, those boards would still exist for a little while. You'd be creating some confidence and trust in the new system. As you mentioned, this is a big change for the community. And I'm concerned that they won't know where to go and how to go. Because they know where to go and how to go now, but there hasn't been a good introduction for them or particularly for the Parks and Rec board and the multimodal board. I don't think that conversation was very robust with them. So I, I love the idea of the holistic overview of the C I P projects. I think that's been, I have been on the multimodal board. And, you know, I've been on the natural lands board and I know how clunky that was and how poorly it worked and how it didn't achieve the goals of the community, which is to get the right projects done. So I'm very excited about that. I am concerned with the financial advisory board in the sense that we're looking for seven people. And I think we're challenged right now with having five financially astute people on a financial advisory board. And how do we get the right skills and have seven people? I'm just, I'm concerned about it. I don't think it's something we can't do. But I think it's going to be really challenging to get the people with the right skill sets that, that broach this entire conversation. So that's going to be a big challenge. And I believe that that's another reason why we need to transition into it. Because those people aren't going to be there on May 1. And then Salt Fab goes away on May 1 and other boards go away on May 1 and we don't have the fab in place on May 1. Be a challenge. And I'm not quite sure how you determine what triggers a working group development. What triggers a working group?
I was gonna say, I think there are several or multiple different opportunities to do that. When it rises to a departmental level of awareness that there's a problem. A fab hears consistently from the constituency that citizens are coming in with a consistent proposal. If it fits within the guidelines of what we're already looking at and the financial advisory board sees it as a, a potential fit or improvement for the program. I think we're open to a lot of different triggers and that we, there should be a clarification on what exactly, not necessarily the exact mechanisms to get there, but what finally sets it in place and how that's determined. Is it determined by the fab? So that's a good question that I don't have the answer for yet. Do you feel like you could speak to that?
Well, what I would speak to a little bit more in detail is we reference, you know, building a simple matrix to help guide that process that supports the level of engagement in that collaborate part of the grid in which we partner with. And then, so the matrix is used to identify the project or the policy fits a variety of different factors. So strategic, if somebody proposes something or an issue is proposed, strategic plan alignment. You know, staff consideration and feedback after they've worked through it. The feasibility of the project going forward, the cost, a variety of factors, and then of course council direction. So that part is not finalized, that matrix, however, we recognize, we think that would be a useful tool in evaluating when and where working groups are established and launched.
As I said in the study session, I think between the community engagement processes that you laid out and this, I do think that we're looking at what could be a model for other communities to use. And that the intention of it is the ideal, the intention to have as much community engagement as possible, as much diverse engagement as possible and have it flow well into the system and happen. But I, I'm concerned because we don't have any practice with this, we don't have any experience at it. And so I, I'm concerned to just cut one thing off and start the other when we're not really prepared for it is challenging. I think we should go ahead and go with that concept. But I think there needs to be a transition plan in between, not in between the two, but concurrent with it so that we don't lose what we have until we're sure that we have a system that's, that's at least reasonably developed to work.
Melissa, I think you indicated, thank you councillor Baxter. You indicate you wanted to speak.
Sure, happy to. Bye. We have had so much conversation about this and I really appreciate all staff's time, effort at just looking at a clean slate and looking at being innovative and doing things different. I feel like it is a new time for our city right now. We have a lot of new things on the horizon. We have a new council coming forward. We have new staff. We have more new staff coming on board. We've, we asked staff, we asked them, we gave them the, the chore of you have a clean slate, what would you design? And this is what together they have come up with for us. We've heard at length from our past mayors, we've heard from many citizens in the community who have served on the boards. You know, a lot of us have experience in serving in those capacities and we recognize that it can be powerful. And I, I do believe that we will still have that. Like councillor Buehl said, we're going from 23 advisory boards and commissions to 15 still for a community our size more than, more and at least equal to many communities our size. So I too, it, it feels somewhat, it, it feels like new territory. It feels somewhat like I, I know that there will be some transition pains, so that concerns me in some ways as well. I hear the concern from other councillors speaking to the same. You know, I, I councillor Baxter brings up the idea of doing the transition simultaneously. And I, I don't disagree that that might be a good alternative to start the fab board, to begin hiring for the fab board and going through the process of bringing people on for that, while simultaneously potentially maintaining some of the boards that might be able to provide a, a download of a history of knowledge, a download of a key agenda items, a download of some of the, you know, what they're currently working on so that that transition piece might be able to be there. That could be a way to get us through without having, as councillor Baxter said at the study session, a cliff. We don't want a cliff. And so I, I'm willing to be a part of the team and that supports a change to try to get to a better, a better outcome for the community in the end, which is more diverse and inclusive community input through various models. I think it's going to take some work. I'm a little bit nervous about it. But I am willing to get behind staff and work with staff as a councillor to do my best in helping through that transition and to be an active part of it as we get going forward.
I'd like to build on what the mayor pro tem said. First of all, a huge thank you to the work. I know you have full-time jobs and you add this to it. And also let me acknowledge that every council, every council builds on the work of previous councillors. I recognize that and we as a community benefit. I also recognize that there's always a role for continuous improvement and evaluating, are there other ways to do this? And so for me, what I see coming out of this is the potential to be even more inclusive and to get a more diverse viewpoints. And I give the example right now, I've served also on several advisory boards. And for the most part, and I'm grateful for the work and the dedication. I want to recognize though, that for the most part, if you want to serve on an advisory board, you need to have free time. And the, and, and sometimes the, the luxury to do the reading of the intense materials, I recognize what that takes. And to be able to attend a meeting on a regular basis. And that may exclude quite a few people. It can exclude the single parent who cannot commit to one night a month for, for three years, but could get involved in helping you figure out what kind of a park do we need in our neighborhood? Or are we getting equitable distribution of resources? It could involve a group from, you use the e-bike example. It could involve not just advocates for e-bikes, but people who have a concern about them as well. And you can get a, a more inclusive representation for a time, time-specific period. And so I see the potential to involve more people. I do believe that you cannot think of everything because you need, you proceed so far and then you need council direction. Is this where you want to go? Because you can't, if you came to us with it fully baked, we would have said, why did you bake it? You know, I mean, I understand that completely. So I, I fully believe that you need a decision and direction. I'm really intrigued and by your comment, I'm really intrigued of the idea, I think it might have been you councillor Baxter, of bringing, and the multimodal board also talked about this, but bringing some of the, and I would actually say four boards because, and I'll come back to that, the multimodal, the open lands and the I A V and the parks and rec to talk about what are the kind of working groups that might need to be formed that would be subsetsed. I also think it's important that when we talk about transition, it is a transition. It is not in perpetuity according to your design. But I've also seen, I've seen the siloed approach. And I, I'll give an example from the, my council liaison work on the internet infrastructure advisory board. So you could think in terms of, here's the 2015 sales tax. And you could say, okay, well, we want this, this and this, and the, the parks and rec may want that. But it could also legitimately be used for ADA improvements, which seem to always fall by the wayside. Or the 2015 sales tax, as the I A V has said, why do you expect all of 2019 to pay for 32nd Street? When if you want sidewalks and bike lanes, why can't that come from some of the other funding sources? So what I do see is the potential to have a, that holistic view of here's our sources. Here's what the community is telling us they want to achieve. And where's the appropriate and appropriate use of the different funding within the legitimacy of the ballot language? So I see the benefit of the four groups coming together to talk about the picture as a whole. I've seen it on the College Avenue calming, waiting because it doesn't make sense to tear the road up now because the streets group needs to work on it. And what does the funding look like around that? So I, I believe that it has been siloed. And I know some people don't like the use of that term, but it is how I would describe the approach. And I see what you're presenting as integrated and with a potential for much more involvement. So I, I thank you. And with a potential for much more involvement. So I, I thank you. I think, I think the transition plan may be your assignment to come back to council. But I also believe you need the direction to, from council. Or a direction to proceed or not, because you put so much work into it at this point.
Mayor and council, if I may, just a couple of comments that I want to, to just include first, just a, a thank you for the challenge. I think it shows that there's a, a lot of trust within staff to kind of get creative and having the ability to, you have a, you know, the policymakers say be bold, see what you can do, come back. Doesn't necessarily mean you're going to agree with it, but I think it did empower our executive leadership team to come up with some what I think are some pretty cool solutions. Obviously it, it's up to you if those work into the plan for you for, for staff. I just want to tell you, thank you. I know there's been some frustration with everyone and sometimes of kind of going back and forth, how do we do this? What could be a, a way to do it? And it was a, a very difficult challenge, but one that I think you all showed a, a lot of ingenuity and, and a lot of just thoughtfulness in how to really improve our engagement. So thank you. And I know that all of our E O T had a hand in it. So thank all of you for your work on that. And depending on where it goes, what I would just say is if there is a, if the council does decide to do transition to this, I would say that we would need help from the council. This is a part to where staff can no longer do this alone. If we're starting to transition the boards and commission members. It is important to know that they do report to the council. And I think it is a, a partnership in working with transitioning with the boards. If this is the direction that is chosen to have a council liaison or a council partnership in helping staff work with the transition of these boards in whichever manner you decide, if you decide that way. I just want to make sure that it's important to know that we are at the part of a partnership stage when it comes to boards and commissions and that it's not something. As, as staff, we respect the org chart, we respect the way that the boards and commissions are, they are your appointees and we're there to assist. So just want to make sure that that's there as well to have the support from the council. Thank you.
And on that note, as one counselor, like I would rather like be involved and be a part of it to make sure that it does go smoothly and that we do get that information. I just think of how effortless the C E C was for me. Cause I am the council liaison and literally it's like this next year's plan for, okay, we need a working group for this. And you know how it would look. And so I'm, you know, happy as one counselor to help facilitate that as we move forward. Jose, the, the one thing I did mention in the study session that if you could touch on real quick, I'm nervous, you know, our staff has a ton going on. And adding this engage Durango piece with the, you know, bi-monthly meetings, potential staff at those, like how do you feel? I don't want the ball to get dropped. And I feel like, and I think that that's, I feel maybe some tension from boards and commissions is that like they have set meetings. It's every month they get together, they talk about these topics. And so I feel like there has to be some like accountability and, and so is there going to be staff assigned? How is that going to kind of look in your head?
You know, in, in my head, I, I look at it and kind of as I said in the study session, some of these things are things that we already do informally. We do hold public meetings, we do hold public events. The other part is if there's not as many boards, there is some time freed up there that allows staff to utilize that and maybe in a working group manner. In, in that portion of it, it was something that we're going to definitely have to take a look into and going through. I'm not exactly sure that there's another city that has gone through something like this. So I think we're kind of a, a test for it for ourselves. And I think that's the most important part. Not really just following what somebody else is doing, but following what you all believe is a council is the best thing for the city of Durango. And it's going to be one of those ones that we're going to have to go through and, and modify and figure out how we go through at this point. When we look at it from a staff perspective, we do think it's things that we can, we can handle. I do think at some point, depending on how much engagement we get and how successful and how big and robust the program may end up coming. We may need more resources, but then I think that's a discussion at that time.
Or a good problem to have.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Please, please.
I want to be the first to admit that the resolution you currently have before you dissolves at least three existing boards creates a new one, but that new one doesn't actually exist yet, as you've noted. And I'm not sure we have a, anything in this resolution that covers that gap in between. These don't exist and this one will, but you haven't even solicited for people to be on that. And I presume there will need to be a city council set of appointments to create those seven people. So I, I share the concern a number of you have. And I drafted part of the ordinance, so I accept responsibility for it. But probably there ought to be some timeframe as to when certain things become effective and other ones become effective. To allow for that. Not to have no coverage, you know, be like letting your insurance lapse and say, well, I'm going to go without insurance for January, February and March. And the hopes that nothing bad happens. And I'll put it in place by April. So, you know, part of me is like, maybe we should do that. And I'll, I'll look to staff and Jose as well. If, you know, my personal thought was maybe what you do is add something to the approved and adopted. It says certain portions of this become effective as of, you know, pick a date in my head, June thirtieth. To dissolve things in July one to have a new F A B in place. I, I will also note to Counselor Baxter's question earlier. The utilities commission evolved out of the water commission, which started in two thousand and two. Went through a lot of incarnations over the years. It was renamed, became the utilities commission along the line. And that's true for a lot of these. Salt Fab started as something else and changed from a financial advisory committee to a financial advisory board. The duties and responsibilities, the Parks and Rec Board changed over time. Various of these committees were renamed. I've done a little flow chart last week and was looking up some more now, but it's not as if you haven't tinkered with these in the past, but I can't find a period where there's ever been a a gap when something got dissolved. Sometimes you did dissolve things and create something new. Or expand responsibility. So I don't know exactly how to address that. In my head, I'm thinking maybe the sensible thing is to say, okay. If you were to adopt the resolution and you haven't done it yet. But if you adopt it, maybe an effective date for parts of it and affect dates for other parts of it would be a good idea.
To, to your point, Bill, the, this, as it is right now, has no effective date. So of anything.
That would be immediately.
Right, right. So tonight. So I think to your point, I think that's a really good consideration, considering that there are meetings planned for these, some of these boards this month, right? And so maybe that's something council needs to talk about is establishing the financial advisory board. Does that process begin on April fifteenth? You know, and the repealing of the resolutions is June fifteenth or, you know, whatever. I do think that that's important and it would provide that transition time.
Or conceivably, I mean, as an alternative, I'm just sort of thinking off the top of my head here and I hate drafting legislation on the fly. But thinking off the top of my head, maybe the dissolution could become effective upon the appointment of a new F A B. And that's an open-ended term. I mean, as opposed to a set date, assuming you have one, I don't know. Or alternatively, you pick one and, and then there's some time in between. And if you get a board appointed in June. And they've gotten till July, there's some transition. I see Torrey wants to weigh in.
Just to, to make a, a, a point. We were going to start advertising as of tomorrow, based on what happens tonight. So hearing your conversation, we might want to you know, approve the financial advisory board, but put an end date on the, the repeal of the other boards. And then we can work through that transition with them at that point. But we thought that, you know, because of the recruiting process and, and getting them on board. By May, that's why we thought we would need a resolution tonight for the financial advisory board.
Do you see any issue? I'm assuming that some of the current board members will want to apply for the financial advisory board. Do you see any issue in like that overlap or? So I don't know, anyone?
Not off the top of my head, without fully thinking through it, but I, I, I would certainly hope that some of our boards and commission.
Absolutely. One hundred percent. That's what I was concerned about. I just.
And I think that it would actually help tremendously with the transition, but I don't without fully thinking of it, I don't see any issue with that.
Okay.
Concurrently going.
I, I'm not aware of you're having any, and this is me not being aware. It doesn't, it doesn't exist. I haven't seen anything that suggests you couldn't serve on more than one board and commission. At the same time, I mean, I know you probably don't typically do that, but you know, particularly one for this about to dissolve.
Right. So it, it's not codified anywhere. But it's been traditional not to. And I was actually, before I was on the planning commission, I had an issue with that. Because there were two boards that didn't have enough people on them and I wanted to be on both of them. And I wasn't allowed to be, even though there was someone else who was on two boards. So they then weren't allowed to be on two boards. So it's kind of, it's never been codified, just FYI. Because there was a time when we didn't have enough people applying for boards. And so if we had done that, we wouldn't have had boards.
One of the reasons a lot of places do have people who serve on multiple, very divergent. Somebody's on the cemetery committee and somebody's on utilities, the streets and roads.
So, oh, please go ahead, go ahead.
I think I want to just chime in on this whole boards and commissions reorganization. So first of all, I want to thank staff. I think you guys did a good job following the direction provided by council. Unfortunately, my position on how to improve boards and commission has been different than the direction that the majority of council gave you. And I also believe you prevented some good items. Such as the working groups or the tiles on the city website during the study session. I think those are good ideas regardless of how the board and commission structure stands. I think the, the strategy, long-term finance advisory board makes sense to change it into a finance advisory board. Assuming it is for what the name implies, that would be finance, expanded responsibilities, financial support and fund balances, capital projects. And that reason for why I say that is because I've seen too many discrepancies between the finances that were presented on to an advisory board versus what we sometimes see from the finance department presented to council. And so with the changes to have the finance advisory board addressing capital projects. And, and then the primary concerns that I've heard raised are often multimodal and parks and rec and national lands associated overlaps. It would almost make more sense to have those three boards changed into the finance advisory board. And then in that case, we might as well call it not the finance advisory board, but the comb- the combined multimodal parks and rec and national lands board. But we have numerous reasons not to proceed resolving these various boards and commissions from our community, mayors, et cetera. I'm, I'm not going to list all the concerns we've had presented to us, but to me, the ob- the obvious ones are the loss of community engagement and a direct line of community from our community through the boards and commissions to council, instead of the direct line only being through city staff or mostly through city staff. The loss of all those volunteers that were so valuable over the years and bring not only their time and energy, but also their institutional historical knowledge of how our town, our city has developed. And I personally, as one counselor, do not think it is going to be practically or possible even to be well informed as a counselor on all those projects that all of a sudden are going to be either pre-screened through the working groups or come to council directly. I do agree that there's many, that there are improvements that possible and necessary. And the way this discussion has changed, I, I just really do not understand why we have to almost ram it through. The fact that the effective goals have to be adjusted and separated and make amendments to this resolution on the fly. I, I just don't understand why we're trying to force this through right on this spot instead of having, having obviously the resolution has to be modified. I, I just don't understand.
Thank you. Did you want to address something? No, 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 please go ahead.
Just wanted to, I may not have been clear, clear enough in discussing the timeline. The reason that we posed an action tonight to create fab was an understanding that in order to advertise for people for council to teams to interview candidates, that the board needed to exist. That may have been a misunderstanding on our part. I think that's a bill question. But that was what this was. The immediate pursuit of the, the motion.
I appreciate that clarification. Yeah, the agenda item says it's establishing the fin- establishing the financial advisory board, but in reality, it's dissolving those four boards. And then establishing at the same time.
Me, may I make a suggestion? And, and I'm just in this interest here. I've heard different things. And I've heard, and it is not uncommon to amend an ordinance on the dais based on feedback. I'm going to throw out some possibilities and open it up for council, thinking about it. This is not a motion yet. I, I'm going to suggest that we might think about a, a possible ordinance that establishes the financial advisory board on April fifth of twenty twenty-three. And seeks feedback from, at a minimum, the multimodal advisory board, the parks and rec, the I A B and the open space. As part of a transition and I'll throw out a date to be concluded by July thirty-first. That would allow April, May, June and July to handle this transition. To work with the different boards on the types of, as the C E C and the liaison there has helped on the kinds of working group items they might need to address. That is just something for the sake of bringing something to the council to discuss in, in real time on the dais.
Tommy Crosby did that. That was not me, but.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
They're fine.
You're static. Thank you. So I throw that out as an option, as a first option.
So I have a question. Do we have to have an end date set today or can we just say? Cause I feel like every board could be different and like it's, I don't feel like they're all exactly the same. I, I just think about my boards that I serve on.
Do you have to set a date certain? No, I think there's other ways to go about it. The one thing I really don't think you should, two things I, I'm personally thinking is, are bad ideas from a legal perspective are number one. Having no boards with responsibility to provide guidance and advice on the sales tax issues because you're required to by those ballot initiatives. So having nobody who's able to do that is a bad idea. Having two boards at the same time who are responsible for that is also a bad idea. And so the one, one option here would be to create a financial advisory board. Staff it up and say, we're going to create it, but their duties won't take effect until either we pick a date for when they start engaging in those duties. But certainly not until we, and we're not going to dissolve the other boards until the new one exists.
Like, can we say like tomorrow, we establish a financial advisory board and then we create it, hire and train them. And once they're ready to start making decisions, we dissolve the other boards?
I think that's an option.
Does that sound like something that?
I'm just trying to think how I would word it in my.
Right.
Head because.
Is that what you're saying?
We, we have a, you know.
There's one thing though that.
Give me five minutes and I can, I can hack this up with a red pen and, and make it look probably there, but I, I would want to take a little bit of.
There's one thing I think that we're missing that we haven't talked about. We've been talking a lot about multimodal infrastructure, natural lands and parks and rec. But we do have proposal on the board also to combine other boards, such as the planning commission, the design review board. And I don't think there's any controversy about those. So I would, I would suggest that we would want to go ahead and, and with the exception of the, I believe that, well, I don't know which resolutions these are, but I believe that we need to consider that in this conversation, because really the only boards that we are discussing, keeping functioning until such time as we think the transition is good as those four boards.
That's my understanding. I mean, my understanding since the beginning, I've heard all of these discussions, which was several months ago. Is that it was never going to be a single stroke of a pen. All get done at once. And for a variety of reasons, including that, you know, your ordinance have to deal with single subjects and some other stuff. You've got a, an L L A, which you're required by statute to have. You've got an election commission, which would require a charter amendment to deal with. You've got a planning commission, which state law is going to require you to keep around. So, you know, there's, the, the plan, as I understood it was always going to be, this was going to be chunked.
So these four, five resolutions that are listed up here. So these four, five um, resolutions that are listed up here, which boards do those five resolutions apply to?
Okay. Two eighteen dash seven.
Turi might have that information also.
In short, it's the I A B, natural lands, parks and rec, multimodal and salt.
Okay, so salt fab's the fifth one. All right. Okay, that makes sense.
So we're not messing with planning commission today or anything today. Okay.
No, these are, these are five specifics. Entities that were created by a variety of those resolutions or their duties were assigned as part of those resolutions. Those are kind of the most recent incarnations of.
Okay. And if it makes a difference in your decision, the current appointments expire May 31st. And they, we would, in the old system or the current system, those appointments would, we'd go through the interviews, we'd make those appointments and they would take office June 1st. So if that matters date wise.
Or the current board uh, could be asked to extend their term for a period of two to three months, something like that, which has happened. When we went from the, when we went from a January selection to a May selection.
How about, what about if we work to establish a financial advisory board tonight? Um, and um. Address, I have put this item again on the agenda for April 18th to establish a timeline. Um, establish, give Mr. Tuthill an opportunity to think about uh, the language. Um, and give ourselves a little bit of time to think through this uh, before we work on repealing any other boards. Um, give ourselves just a little time such that we can provide for a better transition.
And so would the resolution then uh, remove the repeal clause? But going forward as of a tomorrow date, establishing a financial advisory board and presumably for the purposes of. However, that's defined.
I'm, I'm, can we do that under this resolution, Mr. Tom?
I think you probably could. I'm thinking about if you took the first paragraph, the first numbered paragraph. And simply had it read, the financial advisory board is hereby created as follows, and then everything else remains the same. What do you, what do you think? If, if, if we take out all the stuff that repeals the other ones and dissolves them and simply says a financial. Board is created, they can't do any of this stuff until you appoint them.
So the question is.
They're not going to make recommendations. They're not going to, going to give you advice. Uh, they're not going to meet until you appoint them. So. You create it first, staff, appoint it second, fill it out. And then come back. Once you've done that, at the, at the same time you make the appointments, you could figure out how to timeframe for repealing and transition.
I, so if we, if we postpone it to the 18th. Um, I, my understanding would be, I'm guessing, depending on the agenda, that this council would not be making that decision.
No, what the, what the mayor pro tem said is make the decision to create it tonight.
The Fab.
The Fab. Come back in two weeks. I don't know it, when, when in the agenda that fits, but. Allow time to get a sense of the, the, the transition and then the repeal.
Right. And usually, um, council change takes place partway through the meeting. And I don't know where that partway through the meeting is. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I don't know either. I guess my question is, can we have business, council business? With the current, this current sitting council prior to the change and finish up loose ends to give us two more weeks to think of.
Tech, technically you don't have a new council until you swarm in.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
And I will remind.
We did that with Santa Rita Park, remember?
We also did it with the appointment of the chief, the outgoing uh, 2019 council. Uh, approved the appointment of the chief of police and then the incoming uh, council had that appointment made.
In this way, I think it gives staff and, um, you know, uh, we can speak with Jose and our one-on-ones more time to just think through. All the details that we might not want to miss in this process.
Uh, city interim city attorney, could you suggest a language that creates that? It could be possible for a vote to create the F A B tonight?
If council was inclined to do that, I would suggest that the motion be. That resolution number 2023 dash. It has another, it's just not on yours. Sixteen. Be adopted. With the changed paragraph one, so that it reads. The financial advisory board is hereby created as follows. Colon and remainder of paragraph one be strictly. Terry, what do you think? Does it, does it work? Is there something? I, I, I'm open to criticism. Trust me. I get it all the time.
I'm not an expert at resolutions either. Tom, would it be possible to pull the resolution up so that we could look at it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm working off mine. So that's why.
Yeah, does anybody know the page of the five minutes?
Yes, it's a hundred and thirty-four.
I do have a question for Erin while we're waiting for that. Uh, I know four people spoke tonight, four staff members, but how many in what other departments were represented in this cross? Functioning team to work on this issue?
Uh, I, I mean, easiest answer is just about every single one of them throughout this process in the last year. Absence, I'm missing someone. I'm, you know, maybe not. I T. Definitely, this is definitely been an organizational life ever as we've worked on varying components of this consideration. Sorry, can't answer that better.
And then while we're also waiting, because it was new to me as a counselor, could someone explain about the international association of public participation? I'd never heard of it. I'm glad that you guys have. And is that a, is that a trade organization? Is that a professional group? How, how does it work with its guidelines for public engagement? Oh, Scott, we haven't heard from you tonight.
We don't really have a long explanation. It's actually became familiar with them in grad school. It's an international group. Uh, they do conferences, train. You can get certifications and facilitation and public participation methods. So it's. Long-standing group and um, very reputable, so. Can I, can I delete this stuff?
Yeah, okay.
Well, this is in read only. That's why I can't do it. So delete that.
So if you struck the highlighted section and struck the word which. In the last line, which we can't do at the same time in a, that particular version of the document. It would read, paragraph one would read, the financial, the. Financial advisory board is hereby created as follows, colon, and then everything else in the resolution would stay the same.
Okay, but when we were doing the motion, so I, like, I think the top resolution, twenty twenty three, I just see. To be adopted with a change paragraph one that says the financial advisory board is hereby created as follows.
No, it doesn't. You would move, you would move to adopt.
With the removal of.
Resolution twenty twenty three dash nineteen with the following changes.
Removal paragraph one.
Is that correct?
Replace paragraph one with the financial advisory board is hereby created as follows.
Yeah.
You're striking the, you're striking the first um, three lines.
Or strike all of paragraph one, just replace it with the financial advisory board is hereby created as follows. Oh, Mayor, it's not that I haven't amended the stuff on the fly in the past.
I'm sure you have.
It's messy. From a.
I, I believe you also need to have the meetings as a suggested, suggested timeline for the meetings. Would you agree, Phil?
Yeah.
It just needs to say suggested rather than in ink, you know, permanent ink.
Just please. Yeah, I'm going to give it a go. If it's wrong, just tell me I'm wrong. Okay, I, um, you make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash sixteen. Um, and establish a financial advisory board with the change paragraph one that strikes the start of the paragraph and just reads. The financial advisory board is hereby created as follows.
With the, with the meetings to be suggested, meetings.
With the meetings to be.
Item four, yeah.
With item four.
What?
Oh, the meetings. Okay.
Don't worry.
By the time we're done, we'll edit.
Oh, my God.
It'll look right. So.
Is that right? No.
So the last meetings was actually changed to say there was going to be a monthly meeting. And we didn't have everything listed like that.
Oh, so with the meetings as monthly meetings. And then change the last part of my motion to be the meetings and item four will be monthly meetings. No, I did it wrong.
No, I think you're fine. I was going to add something else and I hate to complicate it, but I just want to make sure that from a staff we're clear. And to bring back on April 18th, the resolutions for the. I want to make sure I'm not with the other five with the dissolved date.
Correct, I believe. Uh, and just giving, I, I was just suggesting giving ourselves a little bit of time to think through what that appropriate dissolve date might be. Um, uh, given that many of us don't think it should be tonight.
How about with a transition plan and dissolution dates?
Yeah.
Perfect. Just want to make sure that if I put it on the agenda.
Just, can I cancel that?
You don't have a second, so you can start all over.
Okay, so it just stopped. So it's dead.
Friendly amendment.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash sixteen with. And establish a financial advisory board with a change paragraph one that strikes the start of the paragraph and just reads. The financial advisory board is hereby created as follows. In section seven additionally, or section four meetings, it states they will have monthly meetings. And then additionally, we are to, staff is to bring back on April 18th, the resolutions. With the transition plan and dissolution dates. Of the other board advisory boards, five advisory boards.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I will make a comment that I will abstain from this vote because I feel that I'm not well informed with all the changes that have been discussed. And implications that they may have. And if that's not acceptable or not appropriate, then I'll vote no.
Any other discussion? Maybe have the vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Abstain.
And Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Thank you. Next item. Discussion and possible action regarding a resolution to. Resolution approving an energy performance contract for the city. Marty, you're back up here.
Does this count as a second time or is it?
For the staff departing, thank you for your work and for staying through to the end of this. Thank you.
Good evening again, uh, mayor and council, uh, Marty Poole, sustainability manager for the city of Durango. And. This is regarding the resolution uh, to approve the energy performance contract itself. So, um. This has come before council several times and a previous vote this evening. Um, I'll go quickly through this, but it is a large uh, and significant contract and uh, it's the reason. Your packet tonight has uh, an additional two hundred and fifty pages in it. Um, so I, uh. Um, it, it, you know, I'm not just going to scream through this. Um, we'll, this will be our final chance to review this. Um, so you're familiar with the um, environmental sustainability and resilience significance of the E P C. Um, again, the timeline here, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Um, the investment audit on city facilities was performed and Dola grant was secured. Twenty twenty one, um, the effort was put on pause to explore alternatives. Um, and then um, the, and, and particularly scope review of facilities. Um, such as the police department or, and, or, yeah, the police department and River City Hall, which were under other analysis. And um, we did that analysis, staff did that analysis throughout two thousand twenty-two and then brought what we have before you today. In November first, you directed staff to uh, finalize the final E P C scope. Um, provided those scope updates and then today we had that vote for the financing agreement and um. And then this final approval of the contract. So just a quick review of what we will be getting here are the uh, solar installations at the five locations. Um, which also does include the roof replacements at the service center and the rec center, which we will be getting the discount on. Through the Inflation Reduction Act because they are combined with solar. Um, will be generating a projected one million kilowatt hours of renewable energy. Um, and actually increase the total solar installed within city limits by eighteen percent. Uh, will be reducing lighting upgrades by fifty percent. Um, or excuse me, reducing lighting uh, energy consumption by over fifty percent. Um, reducing our water consumption at these facilities by about a third and then uh, an extensive um, energy. Um, energy analysis and engagement and building systems optimization. Um, services for three years through, um, through this program. Vastly supporting uh, staff capacity and expertise. Um, Carnegie, I think is very important to address. Um, so Carnegie is still within the scope and includes a large H V A C upgrade. Um, that is on a separate notice to proceed. So, um. Carnegie, as you know, is, it's an older building. It has an older H V A C system. Um, and that's current system uses excess energy and undervalues the property. So the proposed uh, future system does have flexibility. Um, and, and it is a twenty-first century, all-electric, high-efficiency. Uh, system that fits into the constraints of the space. Um, and again, this separate notice to concede, notice to proceed. Gives the city manager uh, and directed staff the flexibility to work with the school district to determine if this is. Gives the city manager uh and directed staff the flexibility to work with the school district to determine if this is indeed what we want to proceed with. Um, cost of construction, um, there have been several efforts throughout the process to keep costs and proposals down. Again, we're using local subcontractors and we're using that local pricing. Um, we have pricing and now um reviewed throughout the process and. Um, feel comfortable with that pricing. Here is the project timeline, again, being completed over the course of twenty twenty three and into twenty twenty four. Um, we saw this slide earlier tonight, but again, a cost and financing review of the overall project. Again, the benefits of the EPC over a self-managed approach. And um again, I can go over the uh analysis of what um. We feel is the most realistic alternative scenario where it actually costs the city more over the course of twenty years. Uh, we don't get much of that installed solar and we have vastly increased greenhouse gas emissions. So I'm happy to answer any remaining questions on this item.
I want to clarify the resolution number. Is it seventeen?
That's correct. Two thousand twenty three seventeen.
Thank you, two thousand twenty three seventeen. Um, any questions? We've had the full presentation. We've had questions beforehand. Um. I I believe you've answered many of the questions, but I did want to offer to counsel if there's any questions before. Anyone might make a call for a vote. Is there a vote? Is there a motion?
I will make a motion by adopting, um, I move to adopt the resolution twenty twenty three dash seventeen. Um. Approving an energy performance contract for the city of Durango with McKinstry Ascension LLC. And authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and perform all necessary functions to complete the same establishing parameters therefore.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you so much. I am so excited about the um steps we're gonna take to meet our sustainability goals. And how quick we're gonna be able to do them with this plan and this contract. And um, yeah, so I'm super excited to finally go after all this work from back when Imogen was here. So, yes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments to make. Let me start by sharing that I'm very committed to the environment and sustainability, including addressing greenhouse gases. I do environmental consultants consulting, which I've done for over twenty five years. I think the investment grade order report by McKinstry, along with all the dependencies and the list of facility improvement measures are very valuable. And I think many of those should be completed. What I have difficulty with is the price we pay to use the contract with McKinstry versus alternative options such as managed or contracted out. We have lost quite some time after the IGA. After the IGA report, which was done in twenty twenty. Uh, instead, we've had many many meetings, probably ten or so. With council and all the staff time, and at the same time, we state we don't have the resources to do the RFPs or outsource this work. Um. All the measures that are listed, the facility improvement measures. Uh, uh, that bring environmental results as well as savings can be categorized in some key tasks, water improvements, electric improvement. And larger projects such as HVAC and solar projects. The the cost uh is the total cost excluding contingency and so on is six point eight six million. Of which the direct construction cost is three point three six, three point three six four million. Which is forty nine percent, and the other fifty one percent goes to the consultants. To me, if you look at a construction contractor and then the markup, that is over a hundred percent markup. Uh, another concern is that um. It's the total cost, the construction cost. And the total cost of the project includes um things that I'm a little bit concerned about, such as the HVAC. At Carnegie was initially estimated to be eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And in the current document, it is one point six seven million, which is more than double. Um, another one would be the lighting upgrade at, for example, the Durango Transit Center. Which is costing four hundred four forty eight thousand dollars. That's a fifteen or so year old building, and. As an environmental, we're have the objective here to env- to do environmentally and sustainably good things. We're gonna rip out a lot of these lights and fixtures. Uh, that are less around fifteen years old to replace them with low energy consuming LED uh fixtures and upgrades, retrofits. And then it probably ends up going in a landfill. That is not necessarily the the best environmental uh approach to uh all of these things. Um, another one would be that it includes Carnegie, the Carnegie Building, uh the city hall, uh the police station. All of which are buildings that have an uncertain future and are being currently discussed. So when you look at the total cost of the contract of seven million. And you know that half of it is only only half it goes to direct construction. I don't think the consulting fees will probably change that much, but the construction cost, if you take out buildings that are gonna have a different future. I I just, I've I'm very strongly committed to making these projects come to fruition. I am very concerned, and I will not support this motion because. The way we spend taxpayers' money, and that is my money, well, it's everybody's money here that pays taxes.
Maybe have the.
Oh, I I just, um, where you where you, Counselor Bosman, that was my first question.
Yeah, I I guess I made my point and I can go in more detail, but I'm, there's a motion on the table and I'll leave it at this.
I I'm not certain if it's appropriate during this form of discussion or not to um ask about point of information. Um, because I'm I'm. I don't know if all of those things that Counselor Bosman just spoke were true, and I don't have any way of verifying that, and so I'm, can we have. Staff um respond if they if they have differences in that conversation?
Thank you. You were actually uh anticipating where I was going. I think that in some cases we have opinion, not fact. And so if there's any counterpoint you'd like to make, um, I would welcome that. Or any additional information. If not, I'd like to make certain that it's clear that um we have licensed engineers within the state working on this. And so I want to make certain that um. It's just because it's spoken doesn't mean it's a fact. So Marty, you have an opportunity, and then I will call if we, I want to end this discussion and call for the vote.
Um, yeah, so regarding the scope, um, I don't know if Counselor Bosman's, perhaps you perhaps you misspoke. Um, the police station is not within the scope. The police substation is. Um, city hall has lighting scope still within. Um, and then Carnegie, as I mentioned, is set on a separate notice to proceed, and so uh discussions. Will, we will be jumping right into discussions with nine R as to whether or not it's appropriate to proceed. Um, of course, the city has its um best interest in mind, but wants to be, you know. Um, a uh a a good community member with another community organization. I've already met with nine R to kind of explain where this process is at and inform them. Um, and regarding the pricing, um. I do not think that that's an accurate representation of the pricing. Um, for anyone that's interested, the um pricing is uh listed in. Uh, it is schedule, pardon me, schedule E. Um. I provided it here. I want to make sure I get the. Schedule. So so that would be schedule F, which is located on uh. Page one hundred and eighty four of the EPC contract. I apologize. I don't know what page that is in the agenda packet. But I think the outright costs to McKinstry um can be seen in line fifteen, which is profit. Um, and then uh line. Uh, ten, which is construction management. So those would be the two that we could outright remove. Those represent seventeen percent. Of the project costs, which I explained in the TLP um public hearing. And then all the other costs are costs that we would incur were we to use direct contractors on any given project. Um, the pricing that McKinstry has secured is by local subs. The increase in price on the Carnegie HVAC was from GARS, which is a local. Uh, subcontractor. If we contracted with them directly, they would give us a similar price. Um, and lastly, we have to acknowledge the five percent CIP cost from the city that we are avoiding. Um, because we are not having to manage this through our CIP. Um, staffing, project management, McKinstry is taking that on. So that was that twelve percent difference that I mentioned uh during the pre- previous agenda item.
Thank you for clarifying the um uh opinions thought by others. I will now call for the vote, please.
I have one question I would like to clarify.
Do that.
It's been seconded and we're in discussion.
But not everyone's had an opportunity to the discussion, and I'm not certain you can do that without approval of the.
I, way taken.
I'd like one clarification, point of clarification for Marty, if possible. On the, you said that the um GARS provided the quote for the HVAC. And the construction cost on the old agenda package to page two hundred ninety four of four hundred sixty six. Shows that the HVAC upgrade construction cost is one point six seven seven million. So GARS provided a quote for one point six seven seven million to upgrade the HVAC system at Carnegie Building.
Um, I can have, uh, we have representatives from the consultants that could break down the cost of that further. Um, it would be my understanding that uh that would be, you would apply that, this cost breakdown. Um, that we're seeing here in schedule F to that one point six million dollar. Um. So um, so Carnegie VF, VRF retrofits, excuse me, Carnegie VRF retrofits represent. Uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But then there are all of the per the the representative percentages on top of of that cost, so. Yeah.
So the GARS proposal was probably seven hundred and fifty thousand. And the total cost in this facility improvement measure list showing a construction cost of one point six seven seven million. Is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar quote from GARS. Plus all the extra fees to have it run through that consulting firm.
Well, so there's design engineering that GARS won't be providing. So if GARS were to give us a quote directly, they would be providing design engineering. Um, there's pre-construction services that GARS is not providing, but they would provide if we subcontracted them separately. There is other pre-construction costs. So there are several costs that McKinstry is taking on. But were we to, were we to utilize GARS directly as the contractor? They would increase their quote to us.
Yeah.
Is my understanding.
No, I I appreciate the clarification and basically supports what I was saying that. You have the contractor cost at forty nine percent, and you almost double that price to come to the total cost, including the consulting, engineering, design, and whatever goes to McKinstry. So thank you for that clarification.
But we would be getting charged that anyways if we contracted with them directly, so.
Let me open up to other counselors to uh have any dis- a discussion as well.
The the reason why I asked for that clarification and information was because um what I am seeing from this sheet is that. Um, the charge for profit is eleven percent, which is low in the construction industry. Oftentimes, it's as high as twenty percent. Um, so and if to Marty's point, if we were to run it through the city, we would have to pay a five percent fee anyway. So in reality, what we're paying is a six percent profit to McKinstry or to this whoever's doing this. Um, and so I think that that's a a fair conversation to have and a fair point to make that it's a, it's. Well, within industry averages for that. Um, construction management is something that of five hundred thousand dollars is something that we would have to pay anyone who did this process. Because we do not have the uh labor pool within the city to do this construction. So we would have to hire someone, no matter how we did this, and we would have to pay construction management costs. So um, and that total together, if you look at that, is only one point one million dollars. It's not fifty percent of the cost of the contract. So I I um, I'm going to disagree with Counselor Bosman's suppositions. Um, additionally, the Carnegie retrofit at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. One of the reasons why that is in there as a do we do or do we don't because of nine R would be at with any time that you sell a building and you're doing capital improvements to it. And you always discuss with the person who's buying it, whose responsibility capital improvements are and what share of that they pay and how that works out. So I'm certain that our staff would do a very good job of those negotiations if we chose to go forward with it, and if we didn't, then the next buyer. Could deal with it on their own. Um, so I don't think that the picture that's been portrayed here by Counselor Bosman's is as. Um, uh, owners as it, and that may be the wrong word, but I don't believe those um numbers were correct, given this, the information sheet that we have.
Thank you. Anyone else before we call the vote? All right, let's call the vote.
Mayor Proton Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Absolute no.
Resounding yes. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Item fifteen point four, Devin, you're on. Discussion and possible action to approve a resolution to make amendments to the twenty twenty two budget adoption, twenty twenty two adopted budget.
Good evening, mayor and council, uh Devon Schmidt, acting chief financial officer. Um, I am here tonight to bring back the twenty twenty two um budget amendments. Um, with the intent um for council to consider uh changes to the twenty twenty two budget. Um, I did want to note that uh staff is always working on different continuous improvement practices, and so looking into twenty twenty three. Um, we are looking um at avenues so that we can um have a better process in the future for these amendments. Um, and so I will be um taking council through um our reasoning for why we're asking for the amendment and um the pieces of how we got here, so. Um, but first off, um, we're here to ask council to approve the attached resolution authorizing budgetary appropriations for the twenty twenty two budget. Um, so at the March twenty first city council regular meeting, staff brought a budget amendment um that included reductions, transfers, and additional appropriations. Um, with the intent to be clear that. With the intent to be clear that expenditures were not just rolling forward and that sufficient fund balance was available. With this amendment, that was, that was our intent was to try to, try to provide a clear picture that the projects weren't simply rolling forward. So while it was our intent to be clear, it caused a little bit of confusion and concerns. And so this request has been modified to simply include unpredicted expenditures in the risk management fund and in the self insurance fund. And that is where expenditures exceed the annual fund appropriations. So a little bit about how we got here. So in the self insurance fund, just going to provide a little bit of history. Prior to 2021, the self insurance fund had really been overlooked for almost 10 years, riding on the hope that good claims would continue. With the pandemic and some of that compression that we saw in 2021 and in 2022. With folks resuming, returning back to the doctors and things of that nature, we did see some plan increases. And so what we're still seeing is about 2.5% of our plan participants account for the high claims and continue to drive up those costs in the self insurance fund. Prior leadership really just balanced the funds without any council action. So that was prior. And with new leadership, there's been a big effort made to correct some of the challenges in the self insurance fund. Some of those areas include increasing the stop loss reimbursement up to 100,000. So that the annual premium costs are affordable for the city. They were at 75,000. Offering a high deductible plan in 2022. Switching to a per employee per month model for city expenses. So that the revenues being received in the self insurance fund are following industry best practices. This also allows staff for better forecasting abilities. And then we're really working with our insurance consultant to have fund balances that match our IBNR of 635,000. And have one month of average claims in the fund balance so that we're in a good position should we have a high claimant month. Our HR team is working with them as well to offer a quarterly smart consumer series for all employees. And so that's really getting our employees in a place where they're being smart consumers with the health insurance benefits. So. And in the risk management fund, and this is also in the self insurance fund, the budget year and the insurance year coincide together. Meaning that if we have high claims that happen in December, there's a timing issue with receiving those claim expenditures as well as our stop loss reimbursement. So with those two coming together at the end of the year, it certainly creates a challenge with that. In addition, workers' compensation and property claims, just in their nature, are difficult to forecast because we're, it's difficult to forecast accidents. So, and then finally, the reason why we're asking for this is that our expenditures are not to exceed annual appropriations. And so that is the reasoning and the intent behind this request for council to consider. So with our current challenges, there's always opportunities for improvement, as I mentioned. As I mentioned, that these two, unfortunately, the budget year and the insurance year are matching. And so there's that timing issue. And so also with just removal of contingencies in our funds, that obviously creates it a little bit difficult for unpredictable events. And so our areas where we have some opportunities for improvement. We are looking at either changing our insurance renewal for when benefits happen, as well as the renewal timing with SIRS. So that they're not coinciding with our fiscal year or our calendar year. We're also, for the, for the prior amendment that was brought to council from March 21st, we're going to work. To try to include majority of those reappropriations or those items in reconciliation. And. We may also recommend a budget amendment in November for any unpredictable events in December. So those are some of the areas that we're exploring as staff to just have that continuous improvement process as we move forward with our budget amendments. And so with that, it's the recommendation that the city council by motion approve the attached resolution. Rising budgetary appropriations for the 2022 budget. And the dollar amounts for the self insurance and the risk management fund are listed for council. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Devin. I will open it up for questions from council.
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. I listened to the meeting when this was brought up first. And it's still not very clear to me, what is the, if there, if there is a legal requirement for us to make this budget amendment?
Sure. So when we're looking at what the state of Colorado has for their budget law. So I know that there's certain areas as a home or municipality where we are exempt. However, there is an area in there where we approve the mill levy. And if we, also if we don't adopt a budget, the state has the authority to withhold our property taxes. So there are areas that apply to us as a municipality. There's also something called preemption law. And so that is really discovering and bill can obviously state on that better than I can. But it's really saying that the state will tolerate anything that it forbids. And what the state says is that an approved, or so because we approve our budget by ordinance and resolution at a fund level. That is the reason for this request. So the self insurance fund and the risk management fund are exceeding at a fund level their expenditures. And so that is why we are requesting this. We did do this in 2021. I'm sorry, for, yeah, 2021. And so that was a recommendation by our auditors with the Adams Group, Jim Ray. And so that's really the reasoning behind the request. That section that I'm referencing where it says that we have to approve the mill levy and we can't exceed our appropriations. Or expenditures cannot exceed our appropriations. That is really the reasoning behind the request.
Can you, so I thought it said somewhere, the expenditures cannot exceed the appropriations and the budget should be adjusted within the budget year. Not.
That is what our charter states. That is not what state, that is not the section that I'm referencing that the state budget law states.
Okay. And then what is, what is, can you explain a little bit about the mill levy comes into play?
Sure. So there's a section in state statute that says before the mill levy is certified. The governing body shall enact an ordinance or resolution adopting the budget, making appropriation for the budget year. The amounts appropriated shall not exceed the expenditures specified in the budget. Appropriations shall be made by a fund or spending agencies within the fund as determined by the governing body. Changes to the adopted budget shall be made with the provisions of the section. I don't have the section on here, but. So that nowhere in that part of the section of the state budget law says local government. And as I mentioned, we do have to certify our mill levy. So that's part of that same section there. So there are, as I mentioned, certain areas as a home rule municipality that we are exempt under that local government section. But the state does have the authority to withhold property taxes if we don't adopt a budget or if we do not complete our act for overtime.
So we're basically already too late because it's April.
So the section that I referenced does not say anything about within the year. As I mentioned, this was something that we did in 21. Our auditors did not take any issue to it. It was a recommendation by Adams Group if we had any that were over at a fund level. And because council approves the budget at a fund level for our ordinances and our resolutions. That's where that recommendation is coming from. So we did, like I said, we, we did this last year. And the auditors did not take any issue to it.
The, the, the budget year, the last year is finished. Yeah. So this budget year. Didn't we start the insurance funds? Did we start the insurance fund negative? I don't think so.
So what we were able to do in the insurance fund is because council had appropriated our insurance dollars. Historically, we had been funding the self insurance fund by what the employee was in the position. So switching to that per employee per month sets us up in a better position where if there's a vacancy or things of that nature. We're not concerned with that. So we're just funding the self insurance fund as if we have the full time FTE employees. So in the, in the next item, I will show you the fund balance analysis that we did. And you'll see that the self insurance fund was starting 2023 with 183,000.
Negative.
Oh, no. Positive.
The problem is solved because we have, the paperwork for budget is not correct, but the fund balance is positive. There is no issue. We live in 2023.
Well, what it says is that appropriations and appropriation means by ordinance or resolution of the spending limits for expenditures.
If, if, if I may, I just wanted to ask a question that might help with this. This budget adjustment is to appropriate money into that fund. So that we are not overspending our appropriation, spending above appropriation.
Correct.
If we don't do this, then we're violating state law.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it was the recommendation of our auditor or consultant, whoever that was, to do this.
Correct.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm. Not during, okay, go.
Oh, you want to make the motion? I think that's appropriate.
Oh, yeah, because I can't wait to have the discussion. I would make the motion that city council approve the attached resolution authorizing the budgetary appropriations for 2022. And that would be Resolution 2023-18.
Correct.
2023-18, yes, counsel.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Discussion, and I believe Counselor Baxter, you've indicated there's something you'd like to say?
Yes, I want to say thank you so much to you, Devin, and to you, Jose, too, for our conversation. Because I, I think that what we realized is that. What came out of it for me is that what you all are working toward is, is a best practices model that's exemplary. And I, and I so appreciate also that you understood that budgets don't have to equal actual. And so we got rid of all the operations adjustments out of there and did the things that we legally needed to do that were critical and important. And I just really appreciate that. And I want to point out that one of the only reasons why we can even have this conversation now is because our finances are so well taken care of and so well managed. That we're in these details, we're talking about $31,000. And I think this is awesome that we're at this point where we can be this specific about how to make things be even more in the line of best practices. So kudos and congratulations to the budget department, the finance department, to the city manager, to all the staff who helped with this. This is, this is awesome. And I so appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll echo the same sentiment. And I also want to say, I really appreciate that after last meeting in our one on ones, you really went into detail. As to like how we were going to adjust things to make it, make, make, make it make more sense. And so I appreciate that level of detail with each of us in our one on one. So thank you so much, Jose, for providing that.
I'd like to add that I remember a time when, and it's not that long ago, but it was four years ago. When we saw $500,000 contingencies for something like this. In fact, in this kind of arena, the HR and the self insurance. And so that's a long, you know, in the time of, in the midst of an embezzlement case, to also have $500,000 contingencies. Was a bit making everyone a little concerned. And so I appreciate the level, that detail that you are bringing this to us and bringing back. I recognize that there's a place and time for contingencies. I just also want to say that we've come a long way from having. Multiple contingencies for in case this happens, this happens, this happens. You've brought it down to a real fine tuning of that budget. Thank you.
I'll, I'll make one little comment. Normally, I, I don't like to change the budget after the year has already passed. But because, as you explained, it's a legal requirement required by state and it's applicable to us as a whole moral municipality. Obviously, I will support this motion.
Is there any other discussion? But lately, heard anyone else?
Then let's call the vote.
Counselor Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Musa?
Yes.
Mayor Osworthy?
Yes.
Okay. I believe it's still me up here, mayor.
It is, it is, you're still on. It's the approve a resolution, possible action to approve a resolution to make amendments to the 2023 adopted budget.
Yes, absolutely. So starting off with what our request is tonight is that city council by motion approve the attached resolution authorizing the budgetary appropriations. And so when we're looking at the 2023 adopted budget amendment, we are requesting to include new or reappropriation of grants. Additionally, governmental accepted accounting principles requires. That revenues and expenditures are recorded in the year that they're received. And so that is the purpose of the expenditures included in here. It's also a requirement that projects are brought back to city council for reappropriation. And so with the current availability of goods and the ability to complete some of the projects. There are several funds with project reappropriations. And so that includes the 2005 parks, open space and trails, parks, multi, parks and multimodal, the 2015 sales tax fund, the 2019 sales tax fund, water, sewer. And airport are requesting reappropriations in 2023. And this request also does include some unanticipated budget adjustments. Resulting in a request for additional appropriation with better information since the budget was reconciled in November. Some examples of these include professional development for the organization's leadership to really continue to build on some shared leadership competencies. Snow hauling due to the moist winter that has presented itself already. Some illegal camping cost cleanups for parks and recreation and police, as well as a mobile office capacity for River City Hall employees that are exceeding some capacity. In addition, there are some requests in the capital projects areas where bids are higher, received higher than budgeted for. And some ability to complete projects in transportation using Chrisa funds. So without further ado, I'll take you through this amendment. And so I apologize that this is small on your screen. I hope it presented better in the packet. But what I wanted to reflect on this is that there is sufficient fund balances to approve the amendments. The green highlights that you see on the slides there are showing the housing approval from the last council meeting. So just wanted to show where some of those requests are coming through. And in our capital funds, you can see that there is sufficient fund balance to approve the amendments. The blue highlight notes that this request does have a bit of a timing issue with some of the FAA reimbursements on the airport capital projects. So you'll see there that today we are showing a negative fund balance in the airport fund. But once they're combined, you can see there's sufficient revenues there and we expect to receive reimbursement on some FAA grants. So a little bit of a timing there since those are done quarterly. So in the general fund. What we're requesting here is some reappropriation of projects for on base migration, lease consultants to comply with GASB 87. Vehicle purchases that were included in 2022 that couldn't be received. As well as a backup battery and generator for the 911 center. The new appropriations includes, includes snow hauling, professional development, illegal camp cleanup and supplemental contract for United Y as well as the mobile office. City Hall. In the grant fund, we have some reappropriation of projects. So this is the BLM CSF fire mitigation, the American Rescue Plan Lobby for Customer Service Enhancements. Stabilization and Sustainability Grant reappropriation, as well as La Posta Road. And then our new appropriations is our E Citation Grant, the Drango PD Fentanyl Investigations and Prosecution Enhancement Grant. And the Drango Peace Officers Behavioral Health Support Grant. Moving on to our housing fund. And so in our housing fund, we have several reappropriations for the ADU Local Rebate Program, the DOLA Grant, the Catalyst Fund 2023 Contribution, as well as the Best Western Appropriation for that $3 million project. In Lodger's Tax, we have several requests for appropriations. And so that's the e-bike, the park restrooms design, river trail and park enhancements, the Destination Management Master Plan, Park Safety Enhancements, Chapman Hill Ice Skates Replacement, and the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Funding. And then Durango Renewal Authority, we have a reappropriation for the Midtown Peak Grant. In our Transportation Fund, reappropriation for the parking study, as well as a new appropriation for some updates. So installation of speakers in the buses, a zero emission vehicle transition plan for transit, software, as well as some improvements to the facilities and the bus stops at Transit. And in the Trash and Recycle Fund, we have some requests for the Green Durango Grants, the electricity usage at the Transit Center, and the 20% completion for the Transit EV Fast Charging Station. And in the Capital Funds for Trash and Recycle, we have a library EV charging station for that as well. In the Airport Fund and Operating, we are requesting for Airport Capital Equipment Replacement Fund reconciliation. So that would free the airport, or not free the airport, but the airport would manage their SURF funds separately, as well as several projects for reappropriation. And I won't read them all, but this really has to do with either remaining engineering, design and preconstruction, many retainage costs, as well as a budget shifting for terminal expansion design, Phase 1A and Phase 1B. In Parks and Multimodal, we are looking for, to keep the Lake Night Horse Bureau Reclamation revenues in the grant fund, we're requesting reappropriation on several projects. I won't read all of those because there's a few on there. In the Parks Open Space and Trails Fund, again, we're looking to keep the Conservation Trust Funds for the Pickleball contribution to stay in that fund. And then several requests for some projects to be reappropriated. In Water, we are looking to move a project that's really much more the maintenance and nature, move it to the Water Operating Fund. In the Water Capital Fund, there are requests for some reappropriations, as well as some revisions where some projects received somewhat of a small haircut, if you will. In the Sewer Fund, we are looking to have an appropriation from the operating cover the negative fund balance that has existed in the Sewer Capital Fund, as well as three projects for reappropriations. And in the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, that's an appropriation to receive those airport capitals funds for the revenues there. And then in the 2019 Sales Tax Fund, we are requesting for reappropriations for North College Road, the Right Away Acquisition for 250, 251. And then we also have some new appropriations in there with the, with an open grade friction course, ADA ramps, alleyways, mill and overlays where the bids were received higher than the budget. Those are three projects there, which includes the Red Mountain Reconstruct First. And then there's two additional requests there for the Test Master Plan Streets Assets, as well as an asphalt recycler. And then a request to move the county contribution for County Road 250, 251 to the General Fund. And so I can take any questions, but I have the recommendation for council up on the board there.
I have a.
Questions, please.
I have a question for that. Could you go back to the, one of the first pages showing the agenda item? Yeah, if you go, maybe it's down.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said general fund?
No, stop right. That's the one.
Right here? Okay.
So if I look at the estimated as of 12/31/2022, which is, what is it, 21,539,000? Does that amount already include, no, one page down.
Right.
Yeah. So the, the second column says estimated beginning as of 12/31/2022. So those total capital funds at 21 million, does that already include the capital projects that were not completed in 2022? That those funds were put back into the fund balance, or how does, how do I say that?
Yeah, so any projects that were not completed in 2022 would just roll into that fund balance.
Okay. And if you go up one page, total operating funds is 75,000, 75 million. And I don't think the capital projects come out of this. Is there any project, capital project that would come out of this fund or no?
So with the estimated beginning fund balances, what we're, what we're doing there is at, at the year end, that's really looking at true revenues and expenditures that happened in 2022. Obviously, that'll be complete and nicely packaged with the annual comprehensive financial report. But as of the time that we reviewed the fund balances, those are the dollars where revenues or expenditures, what's left over essentially. And so from there, you can see where you have your transfers that transfer to the capital projects funds. I don't know if, sorry, that's not tip, that's not on this screen when we do our, our ordinance and our resolution for the budget, you see that there. But to answer your question, no, the estimated beginning fund balances for these funds does not have the, the capital piece in it.
Okay.
Those are combined at the end.
So the total, this is just a little more than I expected. So total fund balance for all the funds, operation, capital projects is about 6 million at the end of 2022.
Yes, yeah.
Interesting. Thank you for clarifying that.
Other question? Yeah, those projects and, and are being reappropriated into 2023 because they did not occur in 2022.
Right.
Ending fund balances with amendments in operating at the end of the year, it's estimated to be 58,000. And the capital projects is estimated to be three, I believe, 3 million is what I'm looking at. So we're looking at by the end of this year, reducing that down to 61 million. And a significant percentage of that, probably as much as 64 million of it is restricted or assigned or already approved for other projects. So I just wanted to make that clear.
I also wanted to make clear that four years ago, council didn't do reappropriations. The funds just rolled over. And they kept rolling over and rolling over. And we had one fund that probably had 15, I think it was started in 15 years and there'd been no action. So I appreciate the, the discipline that actually I think council requires of you to bring back those projects that have not been completed. It's not an automatic, any councillor could say, hmm, do we really want to roll this over, reappropriate it? Not roll it over, but it is a practice, it's a best practice. And I appreciate the effort, Devin, you were part of that, to make that, those changes. So thank you. Any other questions for Devin? Is there a motion? And would this be 2019? Which is that? I'm sorry.
It's 2023-19.
19. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the attached resolution authorizing the budgetary transfers and additional or revised appropriations for 2023, resolution 2023-19.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I love the transparency and the straightforwardness. And I think that COVID has, is probably still going to have some effects for a while. But one of the biggest ones is that we were not able to receive bids or get work done that we had planned on. And so now we're moving forward in a, a different way to help make that happen. And I really appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Let's have the vote.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Musa?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Sullivan?
Yes. All right, we have one more item. I'm sorry. Well, no, you can give us the creative, you're the one who's come up with. All right, if you'd like to, otherwise, next week you can touch, perfect, we'll resolve. All right, on that note, we end this meeting.